Hi, I'm Pat Thatcher.
And I'm Margaret Gifford. And we're from South Beach International Realty in Falmouth.
Margaret, I wanted to get away and do some skiing this winter.
And I wanted to get away to the Caribbean.
But guess what? The real estate market in Falmouth is so hot right now.
And the inventory's low, so it's great for sellers.
And mortgage rates are still good, so that's great for buyers. So guess what?
I don't think we should leave Falmouth.
We're gonna stay right here.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Monday, January 13, 2014 meeting of the Falmouth Board of Selectmen. I invite you all to rise and join the board as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A few procedural announcements before we begin. To my left, excuse me, my name is Brent Putnam. I'm chairman of the Board of Selectmen. To my left is Selectman Mary Pat Flynn, Town Manager Julian Susso, and Assistant Town Manager Heather Harper. To my right is Vice Chair Doug Jones, Selectman Kevin Murphy, and Selectman Rebecca Moffett. If you have a cellphone or some other device which might spontaneously create noise while you're with us, please turn it off or silence it for the duration. Please refrain from any conversations here in the room or outside, immediately outside the door, because it can interrupt the proceedings. If you would like to speak this evening, and there will be opportunities for public comment, we have a speaker's policy that we ask that you adhere to, the copy of which is on the door. Please wait to be recognized by the chair in those situations. When you are recognized, please come to the lectern, identify yourself for the record. We may know who you are, but that doesn't mean our recording secretary or the folks at home do. And please direct all your questions or comments through the chair, and don't engage in any discussion or debate with the board or with the audience. If you decide to leave before the meeting is over, please do so quietly, because obviously the meeting isn't over, and we want to make sure we can continue without interruption. If you'd like to record the meeting, you may do so via audio. You simply need to announce it to the board that you're doing so. If you'd like to record it via video, you need to ask permission from the board. So at this time, is there anyone who wishes to ask permission or announce that they are recording? All right. And with that, we'll go to our announcements and proclamations, and we'll start with No Guff Week. Ms. Moffett?
Proclamation, whereas, No Guff Day has been celebrated since 2001 at Falmouth High School, when Adjustment Counselor Greg Gilbert worked with his students to find a provocative, proactive way to handle conflicts. They came up with the phrase "No Guff" and worked with graphic arts teacher Doug Ryswell to print "No Guff" T-shirts for students. Shortly after the first celebration, Mr. Ryswell was killed in a tragic motorcycle accident. Since then, "No Guff" has been held in his remembrance as he was empowered students to get involved in creating a positive atmosphere. And, whereas, by taking the pledge and making a concerted effort to observe the "No Guff" mantra, community members work together in support of each other in keeping a positive attitude and creating a positive environment. The No Guff Pledge: I will not speak or text anything negative about anyone for an entire day. And, whereas, celebrating "No Guff" can raise awareness, change the environment, help people feel better about themselves and others by discouraging negative remarks, put downs, and bullying. And, whereas, the town of Falmouth is a No Guff community. Celebrations and observations are planned throughout the week. Falmouth citizens are encouraged to come up with creative ways to create the "No Guff" concept at home, at school, at work, and during leisure time. Now, therefore, we, Brett Putnam, Doug Jones, Mary Pat Flynn, Kevin Murphy, Rebecca Moffett, as Selectmen of the town of Falmouth, by authority vested in us, do hereby call upon citizens of Falmouth to participate in all activities related to the No Guff policy proclaimed, January 27th to the 31st, 2014, No Guff Week.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion?
I think we have a presentation.
We do. All those in favor?
Aye.
Ms. Crago? Oh, wow. Just a few. Oh, there's names on it?
Yeah. Good evening. My name is Tracy Crago. I'm the Director of Falmouth Volunteers in Public Schools, and I bring with me tonight two Falmouth High School seniors, Caleb Brown and Will O'Connor. And they will very briefly share their reflection on what No Guff Week has meant to them as high school students and even before that. I will leave this with you also. This is the sign that goes in the windows of community businesses, that it's declaring a No Guff Zone. And as a way to sort of get the community more involved in No Guff, we've actually added something new this year. I think part of what's made No Guff such a special celebration at the high school every year is that students can vote for their peers, someone who exemplifies the No Guff spirit, you know, in their lives on a regular basis. And the students, the freshmen, vote for one male and one female, sophomores, et cetera, and then staff members as well. And I will say, it's amazing that the kids actually get it right. It's absolutely not a popularity contest. It's actually, they really always seem to find the kids who really, truly exemplify the No Guff spirit. So we thought that this year, we would actually take a call for nominations for a community member who exemplifies the No Guff spirit. So that information went out today through email, and it will also be in the local newspapers. So if you know someone, it's a very easy nomination form, and we welcome those nominations. So, Caleb, you're first.
Good evening. My name's Caleb Brown. I'm a senior at Falmouth High School. And to me, "No Guff" means being accepting of those who are different than I am, and not judging people for those differences, but learning to enjoy and embrace the unique qualities that make us who we are. "No Guff" means more than being, than not being critical or bullying, but standing up for those who may be less likely to stand up for themselves. Falmouth High School is about as diverse as any place in the country, and is what makes going to school in Falmouth the great experience that it is. Diversity is what makes this country great, and diversity is what makes Falmouth strong.
Hello. I am Will O'Connor, also a Falmouth High School senior. One of my biggest pet peeves is bullying. I don't care if you're big, tall, skinny, small, black, white, or even purple. We all bleed red, and that's why I think "No Guff" is such a great thing to preach to people.
Thank you. And I would invite all of you to attend as many of the events. They'll be published on the website and in the newspaper as well. We kick off the week Monday morning at Morse Pond School, and that is just a phenomenal assembly. We have high school students come down and talk to the fifth and sixth graders about what it's like at the high school for "No Guff." And then they do an amazing video that's produced in-house at Morse Pond, Anne Goulart and Brian Switzer's direction, and it's great. And then we end the week at Falmouth High School with an assembly and some award presentations. But in between, there's a lot of really great things, so encourage you all to attend. Thank you.
Thank you. Just so everyone knows, we got, in the bags that were handed to us, we got pencils and T-shirts, as we do every year. My daughter's gonna love this, because she takes the T-shirts and wears them. I don't get to wear it. She takes them from me, so, but thank you. We have a few proclamations this evening. The next one is for the Falmouth Corral. Mr. Jones?
Proclamation, whereas, the Falmouth Corral's mission is to share with its audiences the joy of singing and to communicate with passion the marvelous and varied choral music created over the centuries. And whereas, the Falmouth Corral has been inspiring and educating singers and audiences the past 50 years through the presentation and celebration of fine choral music. And whereas, the town of Falmouth's rich and cultural environment is greatly enhanced by the Falmouth Corral's stellar voices. And whereas, the Falmouth community benefits both educationally and socially from the Corral's musical presentations and entertainments, specifically master classes, community sings, and outreach concerts. Now, therefore, we, Brent Putnam, Doug Jones, Mary Pat Flynn, Kevin Murphy, and Rebecca Moffett, as Selectmen of the town of Falmouth, by authority vested in us, do hereby proclaim Saturday, February 8th, 2014, as Falmouth Corral Day.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Unanimous? Is there a member of the Falmouth Corral here? I know you folks wanted to say a couple words.
I'm Ralph Wadley. I'm the immediate past president of the Falmouth Corral. I'd just like to say thank you very much. The Corral's celebrating its 50th anniversary in 2014. We have a gala dinner scheduled for February 8th, and that's why we wanted February 8th to be Falmouth Corral Day. We'll be presenting a concert at Falmouth Academy in March. And on July 14th, we will have a program at the Band Shell on Scranton Avenue, which will be our gift to the community. Lots of good, general, entertaining music. So mark that on your calendar, and thank you very much for your attention to the Corral tonight.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
And we have a proclamation for Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. National Holiday.
Whereas, the town of Falmouth is a No Place For Hate community. And whereas, the No Place For Hate program is founded on the fundamental conviction that all persons are entitled to equal protection, equal opportunity in the enjoyment of civil rights. And whereas, Nobel Prize, Peace Prize honoree Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. devoted and gave his life to equality in all people. And whereas, members and friends of the Falmouth No Place For Hate program have isolated and coordinated the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. National Holiday Breakfast. And whereas, Falmouth joins other Cape Cod communities in the world on this special day in all days in recognition of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s efforts and accomplishments in making this world a better place for all people. Now, therefore, we, Brent Putnam, Doug Jones, Mary Pat Flynn, Kevin Murphy, Rebecca Moffett, as the Selectmen of the town of Falmouth, by authority vested in us, do hereby proclaim citizens of Falmouth to participate in all activities related to Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. National Holiday Breakfast and proclaim January 20th, 2014, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. National Holiday. So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Unanimous. And along with the proclamation, we do have an announcement of the 7th Annual Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. National Holiday Breakfast. This year, it'll be held at the Morse Pond School. This is next Monday, January 20, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. Tickets are available at, let's see, two options. You can go, well, you could go through Denise Coleman, the Personnel Director here in Town Hall, email to F A L H R at falmouthmass.us, or call 508-495-7330. Checks will be made payable to the town of Falmouth, No Place For Hate. The guests this year, we've got Keith Holmes and Rabbi Elias Lieberman. And we got a few more announcements. Is this along the lines of the Martin Luther King?
Well, if I may. I just wanted to say that what a great community we really are, that we can come here in one evening and announce and proclaim that we are going to celebrate very important events here in the community that involve everyone. It's not just for young people or older people, but these events are for everyone. And to think that we can take time out of one meeting just to have these proclamations and be able to let the community know that we want them to participate along with us in celebrating them. Thank you.
Thank you. We're also this evening announcing a schedule for the April 2014 Special Town Meeting. This is an additional to the annual town meeting. The warrant for this special town meeting will be closed next Friday, January 24. The board will vote the articles and execute the warrant on Monday, February 3rd, although we may change it. Can we change that to the 10th?
Yes. If the board's ordained, you can change that to the 10th.
That would be wonderful, Mr. Jones.
Okay. So we'll change it to the 10th, and then the publishing of the articles would be?
14th.
It would be the following Friday, so excuse me. So we will vote the articles and execute the warrant on Monday, February 10th. Publish the articles on Friday, February 14th. The board will vote recommendations for those articles on Monday, March 10th. The warrant will be published with the recommendations on Friday, March 21st, and the date of the Special Town Meeting will be Tuesday, April 8th.
So move. Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Unanimous. And finally, following up on the meeting, we had a few weeks back where we had the senior, excuse me, the Council on Aging, excuse me, requesting the next step, if you will, in looking at the potential for a new senior center. We will be momentarily, if the board chooses to pursue it, approving the charge statement and the membership of that, of the working group. And in anticipation of that, the board will be asking for a member of the general public to participate as part of the feasibility working group. One of the recommendations was that a member of the board serve on this working group, and the board has decided that we will have a representative from the public represent us. So anyone so interested in being a part of this is welcome to submit applications. We would ask that they be submitted before the end of the month, so that we can select the individual and appoint them to the working group.
I think specifically, we're looking for that on January 24th. So the January 27th at our meeting, we could actually make that, have an interview.
Two weeks. If you could, within the next two weeks, if we could have applications by Friday, the 24th, and then we could do interviews on the 27th.
So move.
I want to be clear. Are we only talking about one position?
Yes.
That these others are already predetermined?
Yes.
So we are not appointing any of these people?
No, they'll be.
We're just looking for a public member.
Well, actually, what we're gonna be doing is, this is the suggested membership. Actually, let me read through this.
No, I don't think you need to read it.
We actually go to this discussion at this point.
Okay.
So it is the same time as the announcement.
That's a good idea. We'll pull this out of order, then. We've got this under our summary of actions. So briefly, we'll pull this out, and we'll take care of this right now. We have the draft charge statement that was presented to us by the Council on Aging, as well as the suggested membership, which includes Chairman of the Council on Aging, Vice Chairman from the Council on Aging, a member representative from the Board of Selectmen, a member of the Town Planner's Office or their designee, a member from the Finance Committee, and then two individuals, past or present, from the Town Building Committee. And what we'll be asking is that these various groups, the Finance Committee, the Planning Board, Planning Office, Council on Aging, the Town Building Committee, identify these individuals for membership on this committee. And as we just noted, we're asking for the public to, anyone who's so interested, submit applications, and the board's representative will be chosen from the applicants.
Just to clarify for what we have in front of us, the representative from the Selectmen will not be a member of the Board of Selectmen, but will just be that large member.
Correct.
If I may, I'm still not clear. All we're doing is appointing a member of the public. We are not appointing the working group.
We would be.
That's already predetermined who the people in the working group would be.
We're essentially appointing those individuals this evening. We're asking that these committees and boards, such as the Planning Board, the Finance Committee, the Council on Aging, the Town Building Committee, that they select individuals for this committee.
But we're not appointing the committee. Is that, or are we?
We are appointing this committee.
By title.
By title.
Not by name.
I find that to be really confusing, because it makes a huge difference if we appoint a committee or if the group from the senior center just simply forms their own working group. You know, these are the suggested people, someone's going to do that. But if we appoint it, then there are certain conditions that the committee is going to have to have. They have to post for 48 hours. There's all sorts of things, because you're a Selectment-appointed committee. And I think for a working group to be really effective, to be available, to be able to change a meeting from one day to the next without having to go through a lot of public notices in order to get their work done, that we should not do that. I don't, I have no problem with interviewing and appointing someone to represent us, but I do think that we complicate the process completely if we attempt to appoint the committee, and then they have to follow all of the other rules and regulations.
Well, they would have to follow all the rules and regulations anyway.
Not if they're a working group, they wouldn't.
Even as a working group, they're a town-formed committee, so they would still have to adhere to the open meeting law.
I don't, I don't agree with that. I don't see it that way. But I don't want to have a big argument. I'm just telling you what my point of view is, and you could, the board will proceed as it wishes to, but I don't particularly concur with the process that's outlined.
Just so the board understands, we did, remember, we had this discussion when the presentation was made to us a few weeks ago. We did reach out to the Town Council's Office, to Town Manager's Office, to get some clarification as to how this was done in the past. And in essence, regardless of whether it is the Council on Aging that appoints this working group, or whether we appoint the working group, it still has to be, it still has to follow the public meeting guidelines, including open meeting law regulations and such. Because the recommendations were presented to us for the membership on the Council on, from the Council on Aging, what we wanted to do was respect the choices that they made and allow them to make the decisions with respect to certain individual members.
If you raise it to that level, you will have to do that. I'm suggesting it not be raised to that level, but that's a decision of the board. A working group is a working group. It's not a committee. It doesn't have to follow a whole lot of rules and procedures. The committees, they're a small group of people who have a specific task to do, and that is to help the Board of Directors of the Council on Aging do a site review. That's all they're asking for. And it's a very simple process, and it's a small group of people. It isn't elevated to a board or a committee. It could be done in a much less formal way that wouldn't complicate the process for the group. That's all. You know, this, I don't want to create a whole big thing here, but I'm just saying to you, my preference would be that they select their own working group for this project. It's a short-term project. It's not even gonna take a very long time to do it and get the work done. And the group will, they will work directly with the board members, and they'll come up with some sort of a recommendation, and then the recommendation can come forward. But we're complicating, I think we're complicating it by making it a Selectmen's committee that has to follow all the rules and regulations that we have set out. But let's not get bogged down in this. I didn't want this to happen. I don't want to get bogged down in it. The board can do what it chooses to do. I just happen to see it differently, so.
But we can't appoint the working group as you described.
You can if you want to, but it's not a working group. If you appoint a working group, that's not a.
If the Council on Aging wants to appoint the working group, you decide, you describe, they can.
They can. That's right. They were just informing us that they were putting a working group together.
I actually thought they were asking for support, and that's the reason.
Well, they're asking, they were giving us an update on where they were and what their next steps were. The other problem that we had with that was, we never heard what the results of the assessment was, so that whole step was left out for us. We didn't know that. I think it's, there's a meeting coming up next week where we will hear it. I think if we had heard the report from UMass on the whole assessment, it may have made it a little easier for us to understand what it is they're trying to accomplish, is to just get a group of people who have certain skills and knowledge that they know and work with us and help us work on the site selection. This isn't a big deal. This is, this is trying to get a task done. That's why it's a working group. It's just a task. And now it has come in to be a full-fledged Board of Selectmen committee, which I don't think, I've already said all the reasons why I don't think it needs to be. But you know, the board decides what it wants to do, and I'm, they're all sitting there very, whatever you guys say, that's what we're gonna do, because we want to get the project done. So they're not gonna take issue with it. I'm the one that's taking issue with it, because I want to make it easy for them to get their job done and get the people they need there, so that they don't have to give 48-hour notices and all that sort of thing, which you will have to do if it's a, if it's a board or committee of the Selectmen. I'm trying to make it easy for them.
Mr. Murphy?
And I agree with you, but unfortunately, I think that horse is out of the barn in this situation. We've asked Town Council, Town Council came back and said, I, but in the effort to be expedient, I think tonight, we can formulate the committee with that one position that has to be filled by the Board of Selectmen, do that in two weeks, and we can move along. It's an ad hoc committee that would have a definitive end time when the completion of the site feasibility is done. And that would, that would be, I don't disagree with you, but I also think that it gives this process a lot more credibility. Yeah. That's just a side thing.
Are you going to make a motion?
I believe, Mr. Jones, if you'd like to reiterate the motion.
Right. The motion is twofold. One is to actually charge the working group with the scope of works, and this is what was outlined to us in December. You may as well go ahead and read through that, that the scope of the work is to develop a timeline for the site selection process and feasibility study, develop site selection criteria for a senior center, such criteria to be reviewed or approved by Town Manager, develop a list of five to seven sites that meet the selection criteria for a senior center to be reviewed and approved by Town Manager, and to also include potential redevelopment sites on existing town property. To evaluate potential sites, to report to Town Manager, the Board of Selectmen in a public forum, and overview the site selection process, and recommend three potential sites to be included in a feasibility study. The Board of Selectmen shall approve the sites, recommend or request to move forward with feasibility study, and the working group will provide guidance on the feasibility study funding sources. This working group will convene a public forum on the site feasibility study and will disband upon the completion of the site feasibility study, membership being the Chairman of the Council on Aging, Vice Chairman of the Council on Aging, the Town Planner or Designee, a member representative of the Finance Committee, and two, either the members from the Town Building Committee or the Chairman of that, either past or present, and one member-at-large appointed by the Board of Selectmen, as has been advertised already.
Can I just make one change to that?
Sure.
And my change would be under the third bullet point, sites on existing town property. Take the word "town" out and just put "property," redevelopment. You know, there could be other opportunities.
That's true. You're right.
Okay. No reason to, see, no reason to limit it.
Right.
Okay. So there's your motion. Do we have a second for the motion?
Second.
Okay. Motion and a second. Ms. Moffett?
Um, on discussion about this, as you read the motion, I would like to ask Mrs. Flynn, which part of this motion would allow this to move quickly and smoothly? If, if you take the top part of the motion, I understand on that as moving smoothly, it is the problem in the second part that the Selectmen would then be in charge of the membership.
I think it would be us actually forming this committee at all. The only way to do it smoothly would be-
It's not a committee. You know, that's what we have to, we have to realize that working groups are not committees. They're not. They're just working groups. They're groups of people who have special skills and knowledge that we sometimes pull to, pull in and say, "We need you to help us with this project because you have, you have the knowledge and experience to help us do this." That's what a working group is. And it's not subject to the open meeting law because it's not a board and it's not a committee. It's a group of people that are trying to help a designated group, which is like the, the Board of Directors of the Council on Aging and the others, get their work done. It's to try to move the process along. So if what you're saying, you know, I'm, no one seems to be concerned about my concerns. So I think if the rest of the Board is comfortable with going forward and having it be a Board of Selectmen committee, then go ahead and do that. I, I mean, I just, I just think it just makes the, the work of the working group far more complicated by doing it that way, when it's a very simple thing. We've inserted ourselves into the process and we've complicated it. So, and I-
If, I'd like to clarify a few things here. First of all, and with all due respect, Ms. Flynn-
Yeah, I understand.
Again, when we talked, talked about this a few weeks back, we said we would refer to Town Council and Town Manager's Office to see how previous groups were formed and how they were, how they were done. And this is basically what we came up with, was that there was no problem with the way, with the recommendations that were provided to us, but what we needed to do was to not specify specific individuals and that if the Selectmen's representative, because the Board cannot always be involved in these committees. Oftentimes, because we are the appointing authority, asking us to be a member of that sort of becomes dicey, and it has happened in the past where we've had issues with that, which is why we, we said, "Okay, we'll have a member at large appointed by the Board," if I may finish. As far as working groups go, I've been on working groups with the Conservation Commission, and we were advised by Town Council that it doesn't matter whether you call it a working group or a committee or a task force, if you have a multi-member body that is meeting for a public purpose, and in this case, as developing site feasibilities, it, it still has to fall under the open meeting law and still has to adhere to those rules and regulations. Better that we follow this and be safe than we try to be expedient and discover in a few months that we've got complaints filed against us and people are upset, and we have to come back and do this all over again. Your complaints have been heard and understood-
They're not complaints. They're, that's a-
But we're following what Town Council's been recommended to us.
When you ask Town Council for an opinion, he gives you an opinion that you asked for. So it's a different. So I don't want to have any more discussion on this. The Board needs to move forward and take action.
Okay. We have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion on the motion?
Yes, there is.
Okay.
The membership part, I agree with Mrs. Flynn. But the beginning part, as Mr. Jones read it, I agree with what is written here. So a single vote in two sections is not going to work for me.
Fine.
Well, wait, before we, we have a motion and a second on the floor.
For the whole, for everything.
We'll, we'll cast a vote on this. If it fails, then we'll come back and, and see if we can come up with something that, that we can move forward on. Any further discussion on the motion?
Yes, yes. And I, and I want to persuade both you, Becky, and Pat to move forward with this because we all know how important this is. This is an opportunity, and we need to, we need to start the process. Pat, I agree with you, but unfortunately, we're at the point right now, it's a different, different way we do things with the open meeting law, and, and it does not allow, that does not prohibit two, two members of this Bo, this group to go out and do some work, come back and report to the ad hoc committee, and that's the way Town Council. I, I just try to move this along, and that's what I really would hope that we would do this evening is to move it along.
We should have the vote.
Okay.
The other reason why I actually am very supportive of this, the work group, the way we've set it up, is I think this is a very important project for the town to move forward on. I think this may make it work a little slower, but get greater support from the entire town. And I think that's crucial, that we do everything we can to be open the process, have this group be very clear of what's going on, and make sure we are getting the entire town behind this project. I think that's more important than giving them the ability to be able to move fast. And I think that's absolutely crucial that we have the support of the Selectmen, of the Town Meeting, and of the entire community for this project.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to approve the charge and the membership of the Site Feasibility Committee Working Group, however we want to term it. Any last words? All those in favor? Aye? Any opposition? All right. The motion carries three to two. Ms. Moffett and Ms. Flynn dissenting.
Can, can, can I make a recommendation, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
That we send out letters to all of these groups and ask them to have their representative for us for our next meeting? In other words, who they would like to represent those groups?
Okay.
As well as, you already put a deadline for the applications who would interview those other candidates of, by our next meeting, which is on the 27th, to be able to appoint the committee.
Thank you. All right. Returning back to the regular agenda. Do we have any other announcements from the Board or the Town Manager's Office?
I'm not sure this is the most appropriate time, but I just do want to announce to the town that we've had a number of concerns about the pickup of trash and recycling in town and what happened with the weather. And just so, so the townspeople know, this is an issue that we're concerned about, looking for solutions as to how we can move forward on that.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. Public comment. This is an opportunity. We provide 10 minutes every meeting for the public to provide feedback of any sort. Every individual is allowed two minutes to speak, and, and we entertain, like I say, a maximum of 10 minutes. So once we get to the 10-minute mark, we do move on. Is there anyone at this time who would like to speak? In the back.
Thank you and good evening. I'm Dr. Bonnie Gifford, Falmouth Superintendent of Schools. And I came tonight, I understand that you will be voting on your budget tonight, and I just wanted to make a statement about, I know it's been in the paper, et cetera, where we stand with our budget, but I felt it imperative, excuse me-
Ms. Gifford-
Yep.
Would you like to make that statement when we do the budget? Because at two minutes, I'm going to have to cut you off. And if you go beyond two minutes, I, I, everybody has to be treated equally. But if you want to make that comment and those, that provide that statement during the budget discussion-
If that would be-
Absolutely.
Okay with the Board, then I will do that.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Going once? Going twice? All right. Moving on to the next item on our agenda, we have the minutes of meetings. January 6th, public session.
I move the minutes of Monday, January 6th, 2014.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the minutes as presented for the public session on January 6th, 2014. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposition? Unanimous. And then we have an executive session from January 6th. I think it was a-
Um, yeah, related to wind turbine litigation and workers' compensation claim settlement. So I would make a motion to approve the minutes of January 6th and not release.
This is for the executive session.
Right.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve and not release the minutes of the executive session for January 6th. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Unanimous. Okay. And the summary of actions. I'll read through these, and if anyone would like to hold one, let me know. We have a firm satisfaction of conditions for Oddfellas Hall purchase agreement. Item two is accept donation to the Beach Department donation account for two defibrillators, the Matthew W. Houlihan Foundation, $2,800. Number three, approved payment from the Beach donation account for a fence at Old Silver Beach Eagle Fence Company, $2,000. Number four, request for grant application for hazardous materials emergency preparedness grant, $1,500, Falmouth Rescue, Falmouth Fire Rescue Department. Number five, we already did-
I'll hold number six.
And we have a hold on number six.
We will approve all of items one through four.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve items one through four. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposition? Unanimous. Ms. Flynn, number six?
Yes, I just wanted to mention that what this refers to is requesting that the Water Quality Management Committee make a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen related to the betterment cost share for the Little Pond Sewer Service area. And when I first saw it, I thought that it's really, it is the Selectmen's obligation to determine what the betterments will be, what the percentage is in terms of what the town pays and what the property owner pays. And then that vote has to be made by Town Meeting. But in, as I was thinking about it and reading through on it, and I thought if the Water Quality Management Committee is willing to take the time to go through what the, some of the projected costs might be for the project and, and how those costs might be laid out in a betterment, and make some recommendations or some options to the Board, I thought that was a really good thing. Because it's a very, very difficult decision for the Board of Selectmen to make, and a very difficult decision for the, for Town Meeting to make because, and I have a clear memory of the betterment on the Old Silver Beach or New Silver Beach project. So I think this is a really good idea, and I support it. So I would move that we approve it.
And, and can I just, I'll, I'll second it, but I hope we can just change the one word in it, after, specifically after you made some statements there. I think it would be best if they come back with options-
With options.
Instead of just a recommendation.
One recommendation. I agree.
So you want to change your motion?
Yes. So I would move that we refer options for the betterment cost share for Little Pond Sewer Service area to the Water Quality Management Committee for a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Mr. Fenner?
Mark Fenner, Precinct 6. I don't think it's out of line for the Water Quality Management Committee to make a recommendation, but I don't think that that was ever part of their mandate. Is that not the duty of the Board of Selectmen and the, and Town Meeting?
It is.
To determine such things? I mean, I, I think it goes beyond the scope of the Water Quality Management Committee.
Well, as, as you may have just heard from the motion, we're not asking them to make the decision. We're asking them to provide recommendations, options, and the Board will ultimately, ultimately be making that decision. All right. Motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Unanimous. All right. Next item on our agenda, we have an application for new all, all alcoholic common victualer license, Celestino's North Falmouth, 444 North Falmouth Highway. This is a continued hearing from January 6th. The applicant or the applicant's representative, I presume, Mr. Murphy?
Before we begin, I'd make a disclosure on the hold of an all-alcoholic seasonal liquor license.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. I'm sorry, sir.
My name is Juan Perez, and I appreciate you commenting this week. Last week, I had to leave town unexpectedly. I'm applying for an all, a year-round all-alcohol liquor license.
Okay.
Just to put on the record, we have a memorandum from Captain Reed of the Police Department that they reviewed the application, and the department has no problem issuing the license. We also have a, from the Health Agent. We do not have a completed food service establishment application from him, nor have they performed an inspection, so those would have to be done before we could actually approve that. And then there was also concern about the number of seats, the seating capacity, which according to the application, we just want to confirm that. We're looking for 69 seats.
Yes.
Then there would be no problem with that from the Building Department, or from the zoning firm.
Okay. Any questions from the Board?
Can you tell us a little bit about what you want to do up there?
Sure.
Breakfast, lunch, dinner, lunch/dinner concept, things of that nature?
Okay. I wanted to do a fine dining restaurant on the weekends. I plan on opening for breakfast and lunch and just dinner on the weekdays. I've had a liquor license for the last five years. I have a restaurant in Chatham. We've had no infractions. We, the people that we hired for the bar are tip-certified. They're experienced. And we want to have, like I said, it's a finer dining restaurant as opposed to a bar type of thing. The bar will basically go for, with the restaurant as opposed to the other way.
Just, just to follow, in the Town of Falmouth, we require all service, whether they be the bar or wait, wait service, to be tip-certified.
Okay.
Do you have a problem with that?
I do not have a problem with that at all.
Yeah, I, if I may, I wasn't clear about your hours of operation and what meals you're going to serve over the course of a week. Could you say that again?
Okay. In the course of a week, when the season begins, I will be open seven nights a week for dinner and breakfast and lunch on Saturday and Sunday.
Oh, okay.
Ms. Moffett?
Um, I was just looking through to, was see, are you, will there be entertainment there?
Um, I haven't decided that yet. I'm not applying for one right now. I know there was in the past, but I was going to get a piano and have a piano type of thing, but I'm not sure. Pianos are very expensive.
Basically, in the same area of where the entertainment was with the previous-
If, if I did that, yes.
It would be in that area?
Yeah.
Okay. Any further questions from the Board? Is anyone in the audience wishes to speak in favor of this application? Anyone who wishes to speak against this application? Anyone with any general questions?
I would move that we close the hearing on this application.
Okay. We have a motion to close the hearing. Mr. Murphy?
Just before we close the hearing, I need one other question.
Sure.
Your hours of operation, when we issue a license, we need to know the hours.
Right. I plan on serving dinner until 10 o'clock. And then I know on my previous, on the application that was there, or the license that was there on the wall, they could serve until 12:30. I would try to keep it at that if I could.
Okay.
And then maybe on the weekends, open earlier, you know, as, so I could do mimosas and ruddy berries, stuff like that for brunch on Saturday and Sunday. I don't know what, I generally will open at 4:00 on weekdays, but on the weekends, I'd like to be able to serve alcohol for breakfast as well.
Okay. And that, my reasoning for you, my, my question to you is, on Saturday, you have the ability to serve alcohol from 8:00 AM to the 12:30.
Okay.
But on Sundays, you'd have to ask specifically for the 10:00 here in your application because otherwise it would be noon to the 12:30.
Okay, very good.
Is that what you're asking?
I would like to do that, yes.
Okay.
I didn't know that that was a problem.
All right, no problem.
Okay.
Okay. We have a motion and-
Couldn't we include the hours of operation in that motion?
This is just to close.
Oh, okay.
It's to close the hearing, yeah.
Okay.
All right. So any further discussion? All right, to close the hearing, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay. How do we want to proceed?
I would make a motion to approve the license.
Second.
With the hours back, with those hours of operation?
With those hours as you designated them. And for seating capacity of 69. Well, that's not ours.
It's, it's under the building commission.
Right. So a motion and a second to approve the application. I'm looking for that part of the application so we can make a note of it, but-
I didn't find it either.
Sorry?
I didn't find it either.
I couldn't find it either.
Was any hours at 4:00 to 12:30, Monday through Friday?
No, it would be eight, the liquor license would be 8:00 AM to, to 12:30. Meaning, that's typically the start time, Sunday from 10:00 AM is what it's usually set.
Right, but if he's only, with the Monday through Friday, he's opening for dinner at 4:00. Do we still have, just have it from 8:00 AM till 12:30 anyway?
If I could, I'd like to reserve the right-
Yeah.
So 8:00 AM to 12:30, Monday through Saturday, 10:00 AM till 12:30 on Sunday?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. So there's our motion.
That's the motion.
You made the motion.
Second.
Nice question.
And we have a second. Okay. Motion second. Is our recording secretary clear with the motion? Okay, just to make sure. All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. The next item on our agenda is a continued wetland hearing. I'm going to recuse myself. Mr. Jones, you have the gavel.
So this is a wetland hearing, application for Michael and Cynthia Sarad to construct a dock in Florence Pond, 59 Old Manot Road, East Falmouth, and this is continuing from December 2nd, 2013. Do we have a representative?
Members of the Board, my name is Charles Sabat- Members of the Board, my name is Charles Sabat. I'm an attorney from Hyannis representing Mr. and Mrs. Sarad this evening. And with me tonight is the project engineer, Jeffrey Reither, for BSS Design, and also Mr. Jack Vacaro, who is the environmental scientist who worked on the project from its inception and undertook a shellfish study. If I may, proceed with our presentation this evening with permission of the Board. We had the opportunity to review the minutes from the last meeting that you held, the initial meeting, and working from those more or less as an outline, I thought perhaps we could respond to the issues that were raised at that hearing, walking through them as best we can. And then I'd like to offer some comments beyond those particular issues. We note that in the minutes of your earlier meeting of December, that there was at least an issue referenced in the minutes as to the length of the dock, not only of the dock, but of the boardwalk itself. And the boardwalk is designed, as approved by the Conservation Commission, to traverse a wetlands area. But I think it's significant to note, and I would draw your attention to the fact, if you look closely at the plan, you'll see that there's an existing path, footpath that crosses the wetlands area right now. And that's significant because currently, people are walking through there to access the shoreline, and that results in an impact on the wetlands resource. By building the boardwalk in accordance with the Conservation Commission standards, it means that people are not walking through the wetlands. And so in reality, the boardwalk serves a significant environmental purpose in that it protects the existing wetlands. And so that really explains, I think, to some great degree, the length of the boardwalk. The boardwalk itself obviously does not impinge upon any navigational concerns because it doesn't extend beyond the shoreline clearly. The only aspect of this structure is the dock ramp and float itself, which the total length consists of 50 feet. So while the boardwalk may, at first blush, appear to be a lengthy structure that accesses the dock, it has a significant environmental purpose to it. With respect to the Harbor Master's recommendation that you referenced in your earlier meeting, apparently there was an email that the Harbor Master submitted to the Conservation Commission before their hearings, in which he said that the dock, he recommended that the dock be reduced in size to 20 feet, or by 20 feet, I believe, and also referenced in that email that the dock exceeded the Army Corps of Engineers requirement of 25 percent. In other words, there's a requirement that says that a dock cannot extend beyond 25 percent of the navigable waterway. And BSS Design responded to that email before the Conservation hearings, correcting him in that the, in actuality, the dock does not exceed 25 percent. It reaches 22 percent of the area. It's within the Army Corps of Engineers standard. Implicitly, the Conservation Commission made that finding when they reviewed the matter that went before them later on. And insofar as reducing the size of the dock is concerned, the dock itself is designed to get the float out into a depth of water that's sufficient to allow a propeller to operate on a small powerboat. So if you reduce the length of the dock and you bring it closer to the shoreline, you're really running afoul of the Conservation Wetland standard, which is to get the propeller into at least three feet of water so that you don't have any damage to the bottom of the pond. So the length of the dock at 50 feet is designed intentionally to get sufficient depth for the vessel that's going to be at the end of the, at the end of the float. Couple of things I want to point out about that, and that is that, first of all, this is going to be a very small boat. This is not going to be a large boat. And that's because when you get to the, the end of the waterway, the bridge that allows you to access the sound is so low and so small, you can't really have any kind of a large vessel in that area. So this is going to be a small boat. The Conservation Commission, I think it's important to note in their restrictions, they restricted this float to one boat, which means that if you do have a powerboat, and there's nothing to say that it would be a powerboat, not only is it going to be small because of the area that's involved, but it means that we're only going to have one. Not two, not three, not four, just one. The other thing about the length of the dock is that we brought with us tonight a plan, which I can hand over to you, but I'll put on easel for the time being. This is a GIS plan that was obtained from the town, and we can see some of the neighboring docks in the area. This is the subject dock, right here in the darker line. And if you look at the other docks in the area, this doesn't really extend out any further than most of the docks that are in the area. And remember, this dark line right here is the shoreline. So the actual dock and float is extending out the same as this one that's to the north. This one, I'm told, is actually taken in. This was taken in the winter time or in the off-season, so this actually would extend outward further. So in actuality, when you, when you scale this off, it's pretty consistent with the other docks that are in the area. The other thing to note, too, is that this is 1,000 feet south of Route 28. So in terms of any traffic in this area of the pond, going to be very little traffic in that area of the pond because there's really no destination there. So in terms of any impact on navigation, it's minimal or nonexistent. And I think this GIS plan also gives you an idea of the scale of the dock in relation to the width of the pond, which I think gets us back to the issue that was raised with the Harbor Master before there were any hearings in the Conservation Commission. I should also point out to you that I think it's also important that when they went before the Conservation Commission, they had two hearings. It wasn't just one, one night. They had one hearing, Conservation Commission wanted some changes in the plan, those changes were made, and it was approved with those changes. So this wasn't some sort of a quick overview. Conservation Commission, as they do with all of these proposals, put this under a microscope, looked at this very closely, had certain specific requirements, and those requirements were met. Insofar as the depth is concerned, I think there's a memo in your file now from the Conservation Agent that addressed the depth issue, and I think that she explained in that, in that email memorandum to you, that the design exists so that at low water, mean-low water, you have at least three feet between the surface of the, between the bottom of that float and the bottom of the pond, again, to prevent any damage from the, from the propeller or the engine. There was a comment in your, in your minutes from last time that referred to the fragility or the delicacy of the ecosystem of Born's Pond. And this, I think arises from a note that was sent at that time, again, prior to the Conservation Hearing, from the Shellfish Warden, who made a comment that this was a fragile area. In actuality, there was a shellfish study that was conducted there by Mr. Vacaro, who is an environmental scientist. And in that study, they actually had 150 sample plots in the area of this dock. And of those 150 sample plots, they found just two cohogs. So it was determined at the end of the day that this was not a significant shellfish resource. Moreover, they found no eelgrass in the area. And that's been explained to me to be significant because eelgrass is an important, is an important growth for shellfish, to help with the growth of shellfish. And for that reason, the Conservation Commission, when there is eelgrass present, is generally very careful about allowing docks in those particular types of environments. Here, there was no eelgrass found, which is fairly significant. So again, there's no perceivable impact on any shellfish resource. And as I indicated, the boat is likely to be a small boat, again, a small horsepower engine, the shaft is not going to be very long. This whole design is intended to prevent the propeller from impinging in any way on the bottom or the surface of the pond, so there'll be very little disruption to that. And if I can, just to emphasize, that under the zoning bylaw under which you are acting, the standard of review is, is that the Board must make, take into account due regard to the effect on the immediate area. And secondly, the general welfare of the town. And I would suggest to you that, given the length of the waterfront on this particular lot and its distance from the neighboring lots, as well as the neighboring existing docks, there is very little negative, in fact, no negative impact whatsoever on any of the abutting parcels. As I've indicated before, there's really no impact on navigation in that particular area. It meets the standards of the Army Corps of Engineers. So that prong of the, of the framework under which you must make your determination, I would suggest to you, has been met. And secondly, in terms of the general welfare of the town, there really is no evidence that the general welfare of the town will be undermined in any way by allowing this particular dock. And in fact, I would submit to you that the design of the dock and the care with which this was examined by the Conservation Commission, I think protects the interests of the town to a great extent. Obviously, this Board can make, under this bylaw, its own independent determination. You're not bound by the Conservation Commission. You know, I readily agree with that. But I would suggest to you that their finding is persuasive, or should be persuasive. And if you look at the order of conditions, if you have it, have had an opportunity to read it, I think you'll find that there are a significant number of restrictions that have been placed here in terms of how this will be constructed, under what conditions it will be constructed, and what activities will be allowed there once it is constructed. So for all of those reasons, I would ask that you vote to approve the application, and we're prepared to answer any specific questions that you may have.
Any questions from the Board this time? Ms. Moffett?
Well, I went out to look at it myself. And I think that that area where the, we're talking about the dock, and then to put the walkway over the wetlands is 30 feet? Is that what you had said earlier?
The dock is 50.
The dock is, is 50.
It's 130, isn't it?
And then coming from the house down, there's a lot of brush that is in there and is very soggy as you walk on it right now.
Correct.
And the next part is, I thought there was eelgrass, which then does signify that there's shellfish. I did not read that there was no eelgrass, that there is eelgrass. And two cohogs, I'm not sure how, how that happened. I mean, or how that study showed only two. It's, okay.
Excuse me?
Mr. Vacaro?
I'm John Vacaro. I'm president of Vacaro Environmental Consulting, and we were contracted to perform the shellfish survey and eelgrass survey as part of that effort. I'm not sure what you saw on, on that land portion of the site, but eelgrass is aquatic.
Oh, no, I'm not, no, I'm not saying I saw it. No, I didn't mean to infer that. It's just that, that in our report, there was eelgrass. I was asking how you were saying there was no eelgrass seen in that area.
Well, maybe, perhaps if I explain how we do our work, you'll have a better understanding.
Okay.
Part of the review process with the Conservation Commission for any dock project in town involves this shellfish survey, which is fairly detailed. We need to go out and establish sampling points on the floor of the pond and bring up, actually bring up sediments, pass them through a sieve, and do counts down to the quarter-inch size on these individuals. We do this with divers, so we have people in the water that are looking, scanning the bottom, the large area. If there's eelgrass, we would see it. There was none there.
All right.
Yes, thank you. We have a report from our Deputy Director of Marine and the Environment, our Shellfish Warden, and he tells us that Born's Pond is a very delicate ecosystem, which we know. Gray Pond, Green Pond, Born's Pond, those are our south-facing estuaries, and they are a great concern to the town in terms of removing nitrogen. Now, I realize that we're not talking about nitrogen, but we're also talking about an estuary that really needs to become more healthy than it is right now. He states that it's the only remaining pond that has some eelgrass. Now, maybe somewhere in the pond, there is eelgrass, maybe there isn't any right near this. Would you know that, Jack?
Yeah, you probably would. Yeah, there, there are areas in, there's remnants of eelgrass in some of our salt ponds, and I wouldn't doubt that there's areas where there is eelgrass within...
In Born's Pond.
The water sheet of Born's Pond, certainly. But again, the standard with the Conservation Commission is that areas within 50 feet of the dock must be devoid of eelgrass, and that is the case here.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Mr. Murphy?
I, oh, I wasn't...
I'm sorry. Glad to have that.
Well, I, I was really concerned about the fact that those, the three ponds, and Born's Pond is one of them, is, is a really serious problem for the town in terms of its health or lack of good health. And we're going to be spending millions of dollars over the next few years trying to restore that health. And I know it seems like it's just one dock, but at some point, you have to stop and say, when is it enough? And normally, we have been mostly favorable toward approving docks. This piece of property has never had a dock. Oftentimes, we look at properties where they have had docks and they have been permitted, and they want to rebuild them or restore them or improve them or whatever. And I guess, from my, from my standpoint, I'm saying, why should we actually approve this? Because there hasn't been one there. And maybe this is the time to make the decision to say no to a dock, because at some point, we're going to have to say no if we want to restore the health of our ecosystems, and Born's Pond is one of those.
Can I respond to that?
Sure.
Point? The way, my response to that would be that what you're saying may be true. In other words, it may be that there is some point in time where, as a matter of public policy, this Board or the town in general might say that enough is enough, that we're not going to allow any more docks. And you can do that. You can adopt a bylaw that can do that. And you can, in fact, prohibit any further docks or severely restrict further dock construction. In that way, you enable the public to have input as to whether or not that's a policy that the public wants to adopt, and that's a policy that the municipality wants to adopt. To do it, to be motivated by that with respect to a particular case, is problematic, because that means that next month or next year or six months from now, you may have a dock project in Born Pond that you favor, and yet you have rejected an earlier one on the theory that you were trying to eliminate docks. So it, it would be better, I would suggest to you, as a matter, as to how to handle that, by simply prohibiting them as a matter of, by means of a bylaw, because that's a more fair way of doing it. And rather than to do it on a case-by-case basis, then it's more consistent, and again, the public has a right to have input.
Mr. Chairman?
Absolutely.
Yes, there was a time when we had a moratorium on docks. I wonder if we could hear from the Harbor Master? He's here tonight. Greg, do you have any comments that you would like to make that would be helpful to the Board in arriving at its decision?
Thank you, Greg Fraser, Harbor Master. We sort of have two competing, as we normally do. I'm obviously very well aware of the Army Corps of Engineers regulations. I don't have a copy of my original memo in front of me, but I'm certainly aware of the 25 percent. I think you'll, certainly the Conservation Commission can attest, I frequently request that docks be pushed back as much as they possibly can and still fall within the Wetlands Protection Act. The reason being is I'm asked to comment on two things. The effect that the dock may have on a mooring and make sure that if it does affect a mooring, that the, it's not a responsibility of the mooring holder to move the dock. That would be the applicant. That's not the case here. And the effect that it has on navigation. My opinion is and has always been that every dock affects navigation. By its very nature, it affects it. The longer it is, the more effect it has. So I routinely ask the Conservation Commission in my request that if it's possible to move it back to, instead of that, and that's exactly what happened in this case.
And they did do that?
I don't believe it.
No.
No, they didn't. But, you know, they're taking my opinion, my request, and they're the regulatory board. There was an issue of the actual, the depth between the bottom of the float and the bottom. But... But I think, you know, we all know, if you go around town, the effect of the Wetlands Protection Act, the change that happened, I don't even know when it changed, but that three-foot regulation went into effect, we now have much longer docks all over town than we ever did before. And that's just, I mean, I understand the competing interest here, but as far as the Army Corps of Engineers regulation, they allow out to that 25%. We have historically frowned upon anyone going out that far unless they absolutely have to.
So what was your recommendation?
I think it was to reduce it back 20 feet in overall length, and I think that had a problem with the conservation depth. It was very close to the three-foot line.
Oh, I see.
Our previous meeting had a discussion whether it was 3 feet from the dock, or 3 feet from the bottom.
Correct.
It serves the dock.
3 feet from the bottom.
It's from the bottom.
Right.
And so that really needs, since it's going to be at least 6 inches dock.
And I don't have the, you know, I don't, can't see the depth there. I don't know whether it could have been reduced at all, but it's sort of a move point now because the conservation has actually approved this particular plan.
Well, I guess that was my question. Is that the reason why it could not have been moved back further was because there isn't 3 feet of water closer to the shore?
Yes.
Okay.
And that was my question I wanted to bring up, that we got a memo from the Conservation Administrator, who let us know that it's 3 feet, not from the surface to the bottom, it's 3 feet from the bottom of the float, in that case. So that, we were looking at the plan, and we thought we had more room to play with to move the dock back further.
And I think it's something that maybe we can look at in the future as far as wetland protection amendments, because in a case like this, we are talking about a very small boat. Well, the effect of 3 feet on a very small boat is not the same as a very large boat at 3 feet. So we might be able to push a dock like this in a little bit, if you're stipulating that it's going to be a very small boat with a very small horsepower engine.
Just as a follow-up on your note there, Pat, I'm a little leery about implementing water sheet zoning without implementing it.
About what?
About virtually spot zoning, saying, we don't want a dock here, because we shouldn't have docks. In other words, we need to take up that issue as a policy issue about the water sheet zoning. We've talked about that in the past, but we've never really had a hard and long discussion about it. I know that George Hampson's group is looking at that zoning in specific areas of the waterways in this town, and, but unfortunately, this is not one of those hits, so I'm a little nervous.
However, it is our job in jurisdiction to approve or disapprove.
Or disapprove.
We have the option of doing either one.
Yes.
And I don't want people to think, oh, because, you know, they came to us and we don't have a policy, we can't say no.
Right.
And I kind of feel a little bit pushed by the applicant, saying, actually, you don't have the authority to deny this, because then someone else might come along and say, no, actually, we do.
We do.
It is our job to take a look at how the dock fits into the scheme and make a decision based on what we feel. We've been authorized to do so, and I feel comfortable if we want to, to be able to do that, and not worry that we have necessarily set a precedent or created spot zoning. And I still think we have to vote on it one way or the other.
What size is a very small boat?
Well, I would imagine, most of the boats that are in Born's Pond, any of these, especially where this is located, you know, they have so many issues getting in and out, not the location itself, but the depth of the water, getting all the way up to the dock. So these are usually small outboards. You know, jet skis are in there, small outboards, 12, 13, 14 feet, with very small outboard engines, because you can't, it's all a no-wake area anyway. You're not supposed to be going more than headway speed anyway, so there's no reason to have large boats. And there are some sailboats, but most of the boats in these ponds are small outboard engines attached to them.
Well, I just want to make another comment, that the boats are small because they can't get under the bridge.
Correct.
I mean, and the bridge was intentionally built that way by George Thusa, umpteen years ago. I can't remember how many years ago.
It's very limited.
And that was the whole purpose of it, so that there would not be bigger boats in Born's Pond.
Do we have further questions for the applicant? From the word I have, two or three. Thank you, Greg.
No, I don't, but you go ahead.
I'm a little concerned, the number of times you mentioned likely the boat would be this and likely the boat would be that. I would rather hear saying the boat will be a small 16-foot boat, not, because sometimes we've had people do this, say, it's likely going to be one boat, and then it turns out we come by three years later and they have three boats tied up.
I said likely, because I think the circumstances are that it's not going to be a large boat, you know, it's not going to be a sport fisherman, it's not going to be a boat, that's a sailboat that has any kind of a significant draft or a keel or anything like that. So just the circumstances are that it's going to be a small boat. And I would say, I would estimate no more than 17 feet. I think you're talking about a small whaler or a small skiff, something of that nature. If I could just respond very briefly, I wasn't suggesting at all that you don't have the authority to deny the application. Obviously, we don't want you to, we're trying to persuade you to allow it. But what I was trying to say in response to the comment that this dock possibly should be denied because there may be too many of them, is a better way to do that, and a more consistent way to do it, generally speaking, is by means of a bylaw or a moratorium, as opposed to making it a case-by-case basis. And all I was trying to say is that then that leaves one open to the suggestion that one is allowed, one isn't. That's all I'm trying to say. So it's just a better way of doing it.
In the plan, you know, you talked about the existing path, that people are currently walking along that path to get to the shore.
Yes.
These people you're talking about, you're talking about?
The owner.
The homeowners.
Oh, and his guests.
Okay, but not the general public?
Not the general public, no.
It's not a public easement that gets them to there, that this is cutting off the public right away?
Right, right.
That it's not part of public access?
No, no. And I think, and I think on that point, if there were no dock there, let's say you deny this, the owner has her right in the world to pull a boat up into the marsh and to throw an anchor down, and to continue to walk across the wetland, that can be done. So by having a boardwalk, by having a dock, and the float, in actuality, it seems to me that you're doing more to protect the wetland than otherwise. And I think the existence of the path is significant, because it shows that people are walking, it has a right to walk across there, and they have a right to walk across the path. This will eliminate that use.
My third question has to do with the, whether there are going to be piers left in during the winter, and if so, I believe the condition says that you're going to have to have bubblers to protect all the piers that are in the water.
I think the ramp in the float will come out, correct? In the wintertime. And there is something that I recall in the order of conditions, it talks about having some sort of circulation around the dock in the wintertime. But Mr. Reither can probably address that question.
Let's look at a note first. In the notes, in the specifications, I'm Jeff Reither, by the way, at BSS Design. There's a note there that says during the off-season, you know, the float will be either bubbled, you know, to keep the ice down, or removed, ramp ampered. So we do have a location where it would be stored up here.
And I'm not sure, maybe this is our issue or not, but to get bubbled, does that mean you're going to have power going across the wetlands to get the power to the, on the bubblers?
Well, it'll be suspended into the structure of the docks. We do have water and electrical power.
Okay. Do we have anyone from the public who'd like to speak in favor of this application?
Okay.
That's Glaudfelter Conservation Commission. I'm not speaking in favor or against. I, the application came before us and met performance standards. I just want to correct a few things that were, that I think people are a little bit confused about. Yes, there is seagrass in Born's Pond, but right at the mouth of Born's Pond, where it's right near the sea, where there's a lot of flushing. It's very unlikely you ever would have had seagrass at this point in that estuary. It's way up the estuary, where you get a lot of freshwater input. And the other thing, we don't see you very often in town, but I don't want you to leave here with the impression that you're allowed to pull your boat up onto a salt marsh and leave it. That is frowned upon, that's impacting one of the most important resources that we have. But yes, people are allowed to walk up and down from their house to the shore, and they could be dragging a boat back and forth there. But we certainly would discourage, strongly discourage anybody from storing their boat on a salt marsh.
Anyone else speak in favor of the applicant? Anyone in opposition to the applicant? Any other further conversation before we close the hearing? I have a motion to close the hearing.
Move to second.
Mr. Murphy to close, and Ms. Flynn to second. Vote on closing the hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Unanimous. What action would the board like to take on this?
I'll make a motion here, and we'll see where it goes. I'll make a motion to approve the plan dated July 23, 2013, and revised on September 10, 2013.
Motion for a second?
I'll second it.
Second, and Mrs. Flynn for further discussion?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I do want to point out that in order to approve this dock, it requires a vote of four. And since the chairman is not here, this would require all of us to vote in favor of this. So I just want to be clear that that's what's out there in front of us right now.
Very true. Okay. So we have a motion, second for the discussion?
I think I've said everything. I'm ready, I was going to say.
Are we ready to vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Two to two. I'm sorry, that has been defeated. Thank you for your consideration.
I think nothing is signed.
We have a request for a grant application for planning and design for the North Falmouth Branch Library. We do have a letter in the file, one of this was previously before the board, and one of the questions that was raised was whether the library board of trustees was aware of and in favor of this grant. And we do have a letter from the chair, Otis Porter, that in fact, they are aware and in support of the grant. Any questions from the board?
Yeah, I do have a question for Leslie Marcy. You mentioned in your, in the backup information, I think, that what you're looking for, depending upon the result of this planning study, is if there were to be any changes made, they would be done in 2022? Is that correct?
That's what we'd be looking at, in that grant round, the 2022.
Can you anticipate in any way what some of those changes might be? I mean, do you have some idea of what they would be?
Sure.
Oh, could you talk about it for a minute?
Sure. Right now, the library is not handicapped accessible. The library has no children's space. The library has no seating. It has no quiet study. It is actually one large room, period, with four seats for adults. It has no internet access computer. So my expectations would be that either the result of the study would, may come up with an addition, a small addition to that building, or to raise that building and replace it with a larger building with all of those things available. The cost estimate, estimated just by the architect that I spoke to would be about probably a 5,000-square-foot building at the largest. It would go between 1.5 million and 2 million, and half of that money would be provided through grants, through the grant, through the construction grant.
All right, another question. How does it compare with the East Falmouth Library in terms of size, in terms of the collections, the number of books that are there, and the use?
The East Falmouth Library's building is about 10,000 square feet. The North Falmouth Library is less than 2,000 square feet. In terms of use, the North Falmouth, the East Falmouth Library circulates about 55,000 items a year, 51,000, I'm sorry, the North Falmouth Library circulates 44,000.
4,000?
Forty-four thousand.
Forty-four thousand.
There are nine libraries, nine communities in the same population size as ours that have branch libraries. Of the nine branch libraries, the East Falmouth and the North Falmouth Library have the fewest resources and have the highest circulation and highest use of all the communities. So they're very well-used, they're very popular. In terms of collection, they, I think the North Falmouth, the East Falmouth, the North Falmouth Library's collection is 10,516, and the North Falmouth, I mean, the East Falmouth Library collection is much larger than that, that number doesn't, isn't coming to me right now.
Well, I'm amazed you could even come close. Thank you, that's very helpful.
Mr. Murphy?
I saw the referral back from the Finance Committee. I'm very happy that you went to them, because
I appreciate that.
It is part of the process that we go through.
Right. I did not know that, but once I knew, I was happy to do that.
Okay, thank you. And I want you to know that that's just, they yell at us if we don't do that as well. And by you applying for this, I'm sure that you're making the commitment that you will stay through at least 2022, right? To see this to come to fruition?
I can't make that commitment. I would love to, but I'm not sure that that would be the right thing to do for the town or for me.
Okay.
Thank you, though.
Any other questions from the board? How do we want to proceed?
I make a motion to approve?
Second.
I have one, just one caveat. The state is very particular about the wording of the motion, and the wording has to be to apply for, receive, and expend funds.
So I make a motion to apply for?
Receive and expend the funds.
I think the word is expect, except, not.
Oh, accept.
I'm sorry.
And accept funds.
No, reply, apply for, accept, and expend funds.
Apply for, accept, and expend funds for the planning and design for the North Falmouth Branch Library.
Motion, do we have a second? And a second? Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda, we have a request for a grant application for dam removal and habitat restoration on the Coonamessit River. Madam Chair?
Good evening, Betsy Glaudfelter, Conservation Commission.
I do believe you gave us some of your things.
Presentation.
This is a grant application for dam removal and habitat restoration in the Coonamessit. It's to the Hurricane Sandy Coastal Resiliency Competitive Grants Program, which is a program where the funds are coming from the Department of Interior, and they're routed through the National Fish and Wildlife Federation. And the objective of this grant would be to remove the lower dam on the Coonamessit River, engage in active restoration of the Lower Bog Dam, and replace, of Lower Bog, and replace an undersized culvert that restricts water flow between Lower Bog and the Middle Bog. And just to give you, I gave you these maps, which you should also receive electronically. But just to go through it, the first one shows four areas that impede fish flow, and you'll remember that in 2011, we received funds from Fish America Foundation and NOAA to do a 10%, to do a feasibility study, and we have 10% conceptual plans on how to improve fish passage in each of those areas. We had several alternatives, we had a public meeting, and we determined which alternatives were most appropriate for each fish passage. Then last year, you'll probably remember, at least I remember, I was here asking for your support in applying for funds from the Massachusetts Environmental Trust. your support in applying for funds from the Massachusetts Environmental Trust. And the—those funds were to do engineering plans, and the Department of—Division of Ecological Restoration, the state division, is—has pledged to do the permitting cost for that. So this particular grant—the—this particular grant is for the construction cost to actually do that work. And you might wonder how Hurricane Sandy fits into this project. One of the things this competitive grant program is for is to help coastal communities improve resiliency of—and restoration of wetland areas to better deal with coastal storms. And so I'm just going to actually skip to—there's a section of the grant that's called "Return on Investment." And our environmental goals are, one, to increase flood storage capacity, and the fourth picture, which shows the area of this particular—this one—this particular project. If Lower Bog Dam is removed, it will allow a surge of floodwater that comes up Great Pond to not be stopped by that barrier and pile up below it. But it'll allow 17 acres times 5 feet, so almost 70 acre-feet of flood storage capacity. And in addition, improving the passage between Lower and Middle Bog, if we did have a big hurricane and we did have a big surge, an additional 70 to 80 acre-feet of flood storage capacity would be in that area. So one is—so a major thing is to in—increase flood storage capacity to protect vulnerable habitats. Our goal all along has been to improve fish habitat and passage, to improve riparian buffer habitat, to improve water quality, because what—the restoration of Lower Bog would—would re-channel the river so that it would be much more sinuous, and a lot of logs would be put in it. And this would be—uh, this would allow the river and that wetland to absorb much more of the nitrogen that would be coming in the—in the groundwater in that system, and minimize erosion that would be caused by floodwaters flowing through the present restricted openings in Lower Bog and Middle—Middle Birm Culvert. Our socio-economic goals are, one, reduce damage to houses, other structures, and infrastructures, roads and bridges, through increased flood storage capacity, and particularly people in Falmouth Port that are in the flood zone. There might be a foot less flooding, could make a difference as to whether their house was flooded or not. Two, increase river corridor recreational use. And three, enhance societal understanding of the role of the river in sustaining biodiversity and water quality. And I might say that one of the other things they ask is, um, how are you leveraging funds? Well, obviously, we're leveraging funds because we already have a grant. But also, since 1964, the town has—has—um, in 1964, the sound—town started setting aside conservation lands within the corridor. And one of the goals of the Conservation Commission and the 300 Committee, one of the things we're working on, is to fully develop the greenway from Coonamessit Pond all the way to Great Pond, uh, have a pathway. And I'm envisioning one of the uses of the granite blocks for the—because there's a wonderful history to the Coonamessit, and that we could have a pavilion right near where Lower Bog currently is that could have storyboards that we talk about land use change. That's—maybe I'll come before you next year, working for funds for that. Pat?
No, I—I just want—
Oh, I'm sorry.
Quite right. I understand, Madam Chair.
Time for comments? No, I just think that, um, I mean, reading this is like reading a story of everything that's there, and what you can do with it, and what you are going to do with it, and how you're going to make it happen. But I think one of the best sentences in here is, "There is minimal risk of failure of this project." And I thought, "That's with all the money that it's going to take to do it, that's a tremendous sentence to be in there." But it's really a great project.
Yeah, this is a—this is a very competitive program, and as you—as you might—it goes all—even Ohio is in this program. It's all the East Coast and Pennsylvania and Ohio, every state that got impacted by Hurricane Sandy. And so some of it's for inland projects. And I'd like to think, you know, it's—it's very competitive, and that—I was led to believe in the webinar that they're not—this—this is not this specific restoration funds. This is to look ahead in ways that the town can—can build resiliency on the coast. And in fact, tomorrow, I'm going to be giving the same talk, hopefully not as nervous. I'm not—never nervous when I'm that—on that side of the—
I—I—I wanted to make that comment about resiliency, because we're hearing that so much now in terms of our coastline, is that—in terms of planning. You know, what should—what can we allow on our coastlines? Because we have to have the resiliency over the next 50 years to be able to handle all the changes in—in—in the climate, you know, in the—in—in everything related to the climate change, in that we need to think about that. And in fact, Pat Kerford, who's Chair of the Planning Board, was telling me that she was at some seminar where they were just given a blank piece of paper, or a map of their community, but it was blank. And they had to draw in what they thought that community should look like 50 years from now, based on the concept of resiliency, and what could happen to the coastline over 50 years. So that's—that's pretty important.
Yeah, we're—we're—Jen and Brian are working together. We're—we'll be having a joint—Conservation will be having a joint meeting soon with the Planning Board. Because obviously, the Planning Board is looking about policy and what to do with the coast, and we look at specific regulations with the coast.
I think this is a tremendous opportunity for the town, for you, and all the work that it takes. It just amazes me, the people that can come together and make these things happen.
Well, as I told Ray Jack when I had a meet—I—I was—I was talking to Brent last week, and I had to meet with all the different partners that we have that you can see in this grant. And I said to Ray, there—you know, I sort of—I have two goals. One is, you know, I—I like natural habitats. I like to see them function well because they have important roles for society, as well as for wildlife. But the real reason I like doing these is that I like to interact with all the people that I get the opportunity to. Greg and Chalkin, Peter, Ray, Jen, Jennifer Pateen, the Finance Committee, the Planning Board, and the Board of Select.
Mr. Murphy?
A couple of—
Kevin.
Couple of things. Number one is, Betsy, great job. It's very thorough. I appreciate you going to the Finance Committee, uh, because that's part of the process. But I—I do need to ask one specific question. Does—uh, because I—it appears in a well-versed in this—that this is above—this is in the Upper Bog as well area? Does this violate anything that our town meeting voted on in regard to Lower Bog?
No. This is—so the—it—let me clarify that. So one of the things that we have been trying to do in—in the Conservation Commission in our current situation in managing the conservation lands there is to improve fish passage. So the only aspect that this has to do with Middle Bog is that it'll improve the—the passage between Lower and Middle Bog, but it—it's not going to affect anything on Upper Bog.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you.
Or Middle Bog, I should say.
Yeah, it—it sometimes run together with me.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions or comments from the audience? Mr. Handy?
I attended several years ago this initial meeting talking about removing the dam, and I certainly don't have any issues with the restoration. It seems to be a—they've been working on it for a long time, spent a lot of money. And my personal observations, history of over three decades working on that, that I kind of have a good feeling of what the Coonamessit could be, and I—I think it's—it's in horrible shape. It's the worst shape that—that it has been in 30 years. But my main concern is the removal of the—the dam. I think it has a very potential, very serious potential to affect the cranberry bogs. And you received a letter today that there are some people that are still interested in maintaining those cranberry bogs. And I think before we go and remove that dam, there's got to be some serious discussions and plans, because I can't see any reason at all that that won't affect the bogs. You have a serious drop over—I think it's over 20 feet between the surface of the Coonamessit River and downstream below the dam. You pull the dam out, I think you know what's going to happen. It's going to create a huge—uh, it'll be a mini, um, canyon coming through there with all that water. It's got to go somewhere, and it's got to—it's got to equal out with the other side. So before you go and—I mean, it's fine as the restoration aspect of this, but we've got to be looking at taking that dam out. I don't—I don't think it's necessary, and I think it has, as Pat Flynn said, it has some potential for serious problems with this.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Dr. Henry Dick. I'm a senior scientist with Oceanographic Institution. I've been involved in environmental action in the Cape for a long time, and I'd like to ask the Board of Select on the table this. And the reason is this, is that the town came to a very hard-fought agreement. Nobody was happy on either side. That agreement was is that cranberry growing would be preserved in Upper and Middle Bog's, and that we would turn over Lower Bog to conservation. This was a big problem for many people in the town. The first rule of environmental action in—in land acquisition is the honor of purpose of—the purpose of a taking. And the purpose of the taking of the Coonamessit River bogs was for cranberry growing. That is evident from the original motion at town meeting.
Mr. Dick, can we focus on—
Yes, I am.
The grant?
Right.
Okay.
So it's been hugely acrimonious, because this was a change in purpose. The Conservation Commission decided to be overly restrictive on cranberry growing by the current grower bottoming. He wasn't allowed to sand. He wasn't allowed to flood. If you can't sand and you can't flood, you can't grow cranberries.
Can we focus on the grant?
Right. And if this grant goes ahead, if this application is made as—as proposed, it is simply breaking a certain amount of faith, because we're going to move ahead with actions that are constant—with conservation in the southern part, but at the same time, we have a Conservation Commission which has chosen to be overly restrictive cranberry growing in the north—in the—in the upper portions, which actually prevents cranberries from being grown there. So I recommended to the Board that they put this application on hold and work out a compromise with the Conservation Commission on the future of the Upper and Middle Bog's. Thank you.
Okay. Before we go any further with cranberries, I'd like to make sure that everybody understands, first of all, this is a grant. Thank you, Mr. Dick. This is a grant for restoration of the Lower Bog, which was the agreement that we're all talking about. And as Madam Chair from the Conservation Commission noted, this is not going to affect the Middle Bog, other than a redesign, as I understand it, of the—the—the passageway between Middle and Lower Bog, which would potentially not only benefit the fish, but benefit the functioning of the cranberry bog as a cranberry bog. Is that correct? Okay. As far as the—the cranberry growing goes, the Board is aware of the issues with the growing of cranberries and the grower. And in fact, I will be reaching out and having a conversation with the Chair of the Conservation Commission, because the Board does, you know, as you've heard already, the Board has concerns about moving forward with that. We want to stick to the original agreement and make sure that we don't have an eruption of a cranberry war here. The Lower Bog was for restoration. The Upper Bog's were going to be farmed, and we want to continue to move ahead with that plan. And I think it's fair to say that the Board is going to move ahead with that plan, and we'll be talking to the Conservation Commission about ensuring that it does happen. So to set everybody's minds at ease, we'll still have cranberry growing. We'll still be doing the restoration. We're not going to try to resurrect this.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments?
Mark Finer in Precinct 6. I just got a comment to make. On many occasions at the wastewater meetings, I asked about the status of this bog relative to nitrogen attenuation and such, which supposedly this is what's happening. But I could never get an answer of any sort what was going on with this bog. And I was completely caught by surprise when this issue came up. And I'm not either for or against, but it just seems like a lot of things were going on in the background without the public knowing, as happens too often in this town. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Finer. I do believe, though, that Ms. Gladfelter just noted that there were public hearings regarding the grants. Okay. All right. Any further comments or questions? Comments or questions from the board?
If I could just ask, when—what is the date? I kept going through this. What is the date this application needs to be filed?
It's due on January 31st. And—but I'll also tell you, it's a government website, and it has many, many little boxes that have to be filled in. And when you fill in the appropriate thing, and then they put a—a red note that tells you that it's wrong. So, um, so it's due the 31st, but I'm trying to have—I would like to have everything in by about the 23rd, so that I can reach out to people who—including the people who designed the website—to get the—the needed information in.
Thank you.
All right. Any last questions from the board? How do we want to proceed?
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve the grant application? Is there any specific language with this, as with the library application?
Specific language, no.
Okay.
We would love to have a strong letter of support from the Board of Select.
I think we can arrange that, depending on how the vote goes, so. All right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? There's your support. All right. Thank you. Next item on our agenda, we have a change of DBA, Quicks Hole LLC, doing business as Quicks Hole Tavern.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Because of the close proximity to this liquor license and the liquor license that I'm a holder of, I'll recuse myself from the vote of this.
So this is a change of DBA. Any questions from the board? Is the applicant or the applicant's representative present? Okay.
Um, my question, and maybe someone here knows, is there going to be a restaurant at the Quicks Hole Tavern?
There already is.
There is.
Well, I didn't know if she was continuing with that, where they were doing so many reservations. But it's still in the same location on the second—
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, it's where the lease site used to be.
No, I'm saying that they had the restaurant on the second floor previously—
Of the lease site, right. And that's—that's going to happen.
Okay.
And I think that'll be done in another month or so.
It was just—
So I make a motion that we approve the, uh, DBA change from Quicks Hole to Quicks Hole Tavern.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Unanimous. Unanimous. Next on the agenda, we have an interview, another applicant for the Representative to the Steamship Authority Board of Governors, Robert Munier. Did I pronounce that correctly? Munier, I apologize. I'm not always good with names. Well, good evening. If you could tell us a little bit about yourself, why you'd like to be Falmouth's Representative to the Board of Governors?
Sure. I'm looking for an opportunity to serve the community. It's a... Steamship Authority is a major operation, significant business, and requires able management and oversight. It obviously is significant to the town of Falmouth. The position, therefore, is really important that we're well represented. And it's also a challenging position that requires, I think, a set of skills that, if well-placed, can achieve the outcomes that we'd be looking for as a town. So it's a chance for me to provide those skills. And I believe that my background is a good fit. When I saw this emerge as an opening, I looked at what the requirements were and realized that this might be a good opportunity to serve the community.
Questions from the Board?
I'll start my question.
Go ahead.
Tell me what you know about the history of the Steamship Authority.
Not a lot.
Okay.
I remember riding it when I was in junior high school.
Okay.
Taking my bicycle across. But as far as the history, I have a lot to learn about the specifics of the history and the way the steamship operates. I know that there was a reorganization of sorts about the way that the Steamship Authority is structured and the voting structure, and that Falmouth has the unique position of having a 10 percent vote. So I see that as a part of the challenge to represent Falmouth well. The requirements, to me, are that you have to have a person who's got credibility and perspective and able to persuade, absent the authority of a vote, that would be equal to the number of folks on the governing board. So I'm aware of those pieces to the puzzle.
That's fine. That's fine. Since there was an absence and we didn't have an interview with you on our last meeting, is your schedule with your employment such that you will have other times that you wouldn't be in the area for a meeting?
I mean, I travel for my position at Woods Hole Oceanographic, but I don't see that as... There would be the odd occasion, but normally I'm in town, and I can schedule my travel. I'm part of the executive team at Woods Hole Oceanographic, and I sort of devise how I have to operate my schedule so that I can meet my commitments. In my previous community, which was Basking Ridge, New Jersey, I served on the Environmental Commission. I was the chairperson of the Open Space Advisory Committee, and I was in a similar position, managing director at a Fortune 500 company, and was able to fulfill the obligations of those positions without any problem.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Keeps jumping to my questions before I get to ask them.
Okay.
Couple of things. First of all, have you ever been in a union or dealt with unions in your...
I've never been in a union. I have dealt with unions. I spent seven years as the president of a privately-held mechanical contracting firm. We're based in Walden, and we had union labor. And so I worked with unions from the management perspective. And in fact, if you saw in my resume, I indicated that I served on a variety of boards. And the purpose of that is to have the relationships with the various sources of labor, so that it was a good working relationship. So that's my... I'd say my connection there, if you will. And I believe it just... It's been a valuable help to me throughout my career, because as an executive and a manager, what you learn from all your experiences, you put together how you work with people. And so I value those seven years of learning how to work in that environment successfully.
All of the other candidates I happen to be familiar with over the course of my... Don't want to say how many years I've been in this community. You, on the other hand, have not. So I see what you have on paper. But can you tell me the skill set that you bring to this position, besides what's on paper? And for the folks out there, why we would appoint you?
Sure. And I appreciate the fact that you... None of you know me. I've been in town since 2010. I took a position on the Vice President for Marine Operations and Facilities at Woods Hole Oceanographic. I've been in the marine pursuits for all of my career, except for those seven years that I ran a construction firm in Boston. And so I have a perspective of an executive, I have a perspective of a manager, I have the perspective of a person who's served on a variety of different boards. So I think I have the big picture. And then, in this unique situation, I also have subject matter expertise. I run a fleet of ships at Woods Hole. I've had two other positions where I've run fleets of ships. I spent seven years at Tyco Telecommunications, building infrastructure for the Internet, which is connecting undersea fiber optic cables across the oceans. That included building buildings onshore, outside plant, all of the pieces of a major piece of infrastructure. So I have a background in both maritime things and in terrestrial construction. And all of the issues that are associated with doing those things, how do you get permits? How do you establish the relationships with the various stakeholders in a major project that enable you to have success? And success being defined as, you know, getting your project done, but getting it done in a manner that is acceptable to all the various stakeholders. So if you draw a parallel with, you know, the project that's being contemplated down at the waterfront of Woods Hole, you know, a successful outcome is one that would achieve the objectives that the Steamship Authority has, but is also acceptable to the community in which that project would take place. So sort of a broad brush, but I think executive perspective and also subject matter expertise, which is why this position, you know, sort of jumped out at me, that this is the way I could serve the community and make a difference.
Okay. The Board of Governors, to whom and by whom would you take your direction as Falmouth's Representative on the Board of Governors?
I think there would be a variety of answers to that. In other words, I think my own judgment, and one of the things that you would be appointing me for, was that I have judgment, I have experience, and so therefore, you're relying on those good attributes to make town decisions. But I would also be listening to the community. I live in Falmouth, obviously. I work in Woods Hole. Those are key constituents to Steamship Authority's activities here in town. And so I have an obligation to understand what the various interests are with all those different groups. So I view that as a constituency of sorts. I don't believe that I... That that role is one where I'm... It's necessarily a democracy, but you take inputs and you weigh all the various inputs, and then you make the best decision you can.
Okay. Thank you.
This isn't exactly the best night for me to ask this question, but how do you persuade others to your point of view? You were here earlier.
Yes, I was. Well, I guess... I think, coming from a point of view of credibility, where you establish a position and then you argue it on the basis of the credibility of what you've put into coming up with that position, whether that's one that's based on your experience, or one that's based on your technical expertise, or a combination thereof. I made a point in my submittal about a board that I sit on, it's the Oregon Fishermen's Cable Committee, which is a group of fishermen and owners of undersea cable systems in Oregon that share the seabed. So these are multi-billion-dollar systems that land in Oregon. And how do you interface with the fishing community, which is obviously a... Has just as much interest and right to the seabed as the cable owners do, and do that satisfactorily. And I happen to be a non-voting member of that board. So there's five fishermen voting members, and there's five cable owner voting members. And my role is a technical advisor, because I happen to have subject matter expertise in this area. And so what I do is to use that background and the perspective I have when things come up, and sometimes it is enhancing or helping to cajole the fisherman's side, and sometimes it's helping to cajole the owner's side. So did you use that position that you have, which I think really credibility is the fundamental thing, that you use to make an argument? And there've been many of those types of occurrences on that committee. And even though the budget of the committee to run that board is only $250,000 a year, we manage multi-billion-dollar cable systems that come ashore and carry all of the internet that goes to the West Coast. So that interrelationship is really important. And that particular committee is... We stood up when one cable was... The first cable was landed in Oregon, and it became such a successful model that, if you look on a map, all the cables that go into the Pacific, far a few, go into Oregon, because this collaboration has been so successful. So I guess my... A long-winded answer, but I think fundamentally, I would use the credibility and reasonableness to build a consensus towards a solution.
Thanks. And the other question I had has to do with freight. And I know you haven't been in the town very long, but you must have some sense of...
I get the impression around here that unless you're here for thirty years, you're not going to be here very long. Which is the same as... Same at Hui. I'll always be a newbie at Hui, no matter how long I'm there.
You'll always be a newbie. If you've been here... You're right. Absolutely. But I'm sure you're aware of all of the issues of traffic going down the Woods Hole Road and the concerns of the people who live, who are but that road, and particularly with the freight, which is the area that's really increasing in terms of the steamship operations. The passengers, not so much, but freight. Do you have any thoughts on New Bedford as a port, and whether or not the other governors might be persuaded that it would be a good idea, perhaps, to consider having some of that freight move out of New Bedford instead of Falmouth?
Well, I mean, I guess my answer would be, I would be open-minded to whatever the reasonable ideas would be. And then, standing here tonight, I'm not enough of an expert to have an opinion one way or the other. I do live on Moreland Road, which is, you know, a couple of blocks from Woods Hole Road. You know, I'm very much a part of the community and understand, you know, the concerns about traffic. I'm not an expert in trucks or anything like that. Next time I would come before you, I probably will have a lot more expertise. I'm a reasonably quick study when it comes to this type of thing. But tonight, I don't think I have an opinion to give you on that, other than it would be something that, along with all the other issues that are in front of the Board of Governors, that I would, you know, well-versed in.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the Board? I was actually going to ask about the Oregon Fishermen's Cable Committee. That jumped out at me, and thank you for sharing that.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
There was one other applicant, Tom Bushy, who unfortunately is unavailable until February for an interview.
The ship left yesterday.
So... We could certainly consider him absent an interview, but the larger question is, do we want to proceed with making an appointment this evening, or do we want to sort of sleep on it? My two cents is that I would like to sleep on it. I understand that there is a feeling that we need to make this appointment as quickly as possible. But looking at the tenure with Bob Marshall, he's spent, was it eleven years, twelve years? The better part of a decade in this role, and I think it's a very significant role for the town, for the community of Woods Hole in particular. And I'm not inclined to make a hasty decision, but that's my two cents.
I would tend to disagree, because this is a one-year appointment until December 31st, 2014.
And a three-year appointment.
If we don't make this decision, they're going to miss already one of the meetings of the few that they're going to have. We do not have a representative in December. Unless we decide to do this at the point of our joint meeting on Saturday, the 20th, the appointment will also miss the January meeting. I think that for Mr. Bushy, who cannot be here till February, his issue, I think, I'm not concerned about whether... I don't think we need to consider him. I'm prepared to vote tonight, based on what we've heard and read on these candidates.
Mr. Jones has persuaded me to his point of view.
I think that we have a great pool of candidates. I think that this Board has had an opportunity to look at the candidates. We gave an opportunity tonight for Mr. Munier to come forward. Unfortunately, Captain Bushy is not going to be available. But I will also say that I'll go along with what Doug is to say. I don't think anybody, whoever we choose this evening or next week, is going to step in and make some rash decisions. I think this is going to be a process that the current Board of Governors needs to get to know our new governor. Our new governor is going to get... Need to get to know whomever the remaining members of the Board of Governors are. And following what Doug is saying, that to be able to really mesh in any group, as this Board knows, you don't step in on your first night and make any rash decisions. It's an opportunity to get to know folks and to be able to make some decisions as it moves forward. I know that as a local businessman, I'm working with a small group down there in the community association to try to work with the steamships. That's continuing to move forward. So I agree that, you know, we've taken all the rational steps, and the sooner the better. It is a one-year appointment. I have no idea why anyone would want this job. Just with all due respect to everybody that's applied, no idea why you'd want the job, but just my utmost respect for anybody that takes it. Just want to say that I surely believe that there is volunteerism, as Virginia Valley used to say, this is a can-do town. So I would say that I'm ready to make an appointment tonight as well.
I would be.
A motion, then, to put all the names in nomination.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay. Do we want to have any discussion before we cast votes?
I would just like to concur with what Kevin just said. I think we did have good candidates, and I think we moved swiftly to try to set up the interviews. And I think it is important to vote tonight. The next meeting is January 21st, which is, what, next week? So I think that... And I think whoever the person is tonight will have the opportunity to really see what those issues are, and come back and give us the report, which will be very helpful to us, I believe. So... And I thank those who have applied, because I agree with Kevin, it's not an easy job. But at least for some of the people who live in Woods Hole or who are in Woods Hole more often, they have a... They have a kind of a front-row seat, in a sense, to what happens down there in the waterfront. That's it.
I just want to make one other comment, if we are, in fact, moving forward, which we've decided to do, is that each of these candidates brings a different skill set to this position. And I think each and every one of them would be a wonderful Board of Governor, no matter who is chosen. But there are... Each of us is going to get an opportunity to make a vote of the skill set that we think, at this particular time, is necessary for our Board of Governors. There could be... It could have been four years ago or a year from now, that it might be looking for a different skill set. But I think each and every one of these candidates brought a great skill set. But the fit that I may be looking for, Becky or everybody, might be looking for tonight could be different than we might be looking for in a year. But unfortunately, right now, we're looking for a skill set. With that being said, I'm ready to vote.
Okay. I'm going to fall along with Ms. Flynn's theme of convincing others this night... This evening. I would like to say a few things, because I... For one, I like to make sure that the public has an understanding of where I'm coming from, but also, I would like perhaps to convince some of you. I'm not sure where you all are leaning in terms of votes, but... And I would agree, four or five fantastic candidates. In fact, there was at least a sixth candidate as well that I know of, and I spoke with, but who had to withdraw his application. So we had some very impressive resumes and some truly impressive candidates. But through the interviews, and under a little duress here, obviously, I would have liked to sleep on this a little bit more. But two of the things that stood out, and when we were talking about the freight thing, Mr. Breslin made some interesting comments about the fact that the vessel that they're looking at replacing, the freight vessel, could decide the fate of freight. Because... And I thought his comments were particularly insightful, because... Because, and I thought his comments were particularly insightful because he was absolutely right. You design a vessel based on your needs, and if they design a vessel for freight that is only going to be moving between Woods Hole and Falmouth, then obviously, it's a very different vessel than maybe moving between, excuse me, between Woods Hole and the Vineyard, than a vessel that might be moving between New Bedford and the Vineyard. And whoever sits on the Board of Governors is going to have some influence in how that vessel is designed and what it's capable of doing. And if we're really serious about trying to get New Bedford to take up some of the freight and get that off of Falmouth's roads, I thought that that was particularly insightful on his part. But for my money, I guess I am especially impressed with Mr. Azendorf, not just with his understanding of the history of the Steamship Authority and what it, what has happened and transpired over the years, but also with the fact that he's involved in the process now. And when we talk about Falmouth's 10% vote and the influence that we might have, I have to wonder if he's sort of got a foot in the door, if you will, in terms of knowing some of the players and understanding some of the folks there, and perhaps maybe being of benefit in that regard and being able to sort of hit the ground running. My two cents.
I guess the contributions I'd like to make is, I think, as Mr. Murphy said, the skill set we're looking for is maybe different among the five of us. But the one I'm looking for is the one, the person who I felt, because there were such talented candidates, such knowledgeable ones, I thought there was hard to really distinguish how much they knew because they knew things in different areas. The person who I felt could get people to vote with them to support Falmouth, and I really thought that Ms. Norton really had a personality and an ability to convince other people that they should support what we're looking for.
Anyone else want to weigh in?
No.
All right.
The only other thing that makes my decision a little bit easier this evening is that Mr. Bushy withdrew and could not interview because I personally, as I said to Mr. Munner today, I personally know every one of these candidates, and there were a couple of candidates that I thought would be outstanding. And I thought Mr. Bushy would be one of them, having known him and worked in the Transportation Management Group, as well as probably the candidate I'm going to vote for. And I rarely say to my wife, "I don't know what I'm going to do," a week or two ago. I didn't want to engage it, but it made my decision much easier, so just FYI.
Okay.
Okay.
Last comments? All right, we'll go down the row then. Ms. Moffett?
Catherine Norton.
Mr. Murphy?
Catherine Norton.
Mr. Jones?
Catherine Norton.
Ms. Flynn?
Catherine Norton.
And I'm going to buck the trend. I still think Mr. Azendorf, but Ms. Norton, by a vote of four to one, you are a new representative to the Board of Governors. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And God bless you and keep you.
And we're always here for you if you need us.
Do I need to get sworn in by the town clerk?
Yes.
Okay.
He's going to need to get a letter from the office.
We've got a letter of appointment, and you take that with you to the town clerk.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I know you'll do a great job.
She will.
We only have a few items left on the agenda. Do we want to stretch our legs, or do we want to...
Keep going.
Keep going. All right then. Next item on the agenda, vote to create position of conservation slash environmental technician.
I'm just going to speak for that one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the board is aware, the FY15 proposed budget includes one single proposal for a full-time position, and that is a shared position between departments, that being the, what we call the conservation slash environmental technician. The board has a copy of the job description, which was transmitted with the information he received, and I'm passing along information on the...
Thank you.
On the salary range for that position to the board. Did I give you enough copies?
We're okay. Sufficient, thank you.
And I'll also note on this same memo that we will be deleting the existing position of conservation slash GIS technician. The creation of all new positions, of course, is subject to consideration and action by the Board of Selectmen, and ISO request this evening for your consideration. Happy to answer any questions you may have about your job description or the sharing of positions between the Conservation Department and Marine and Environmental Services.
Just to reiterate, the funding for this is already in the budget package we received last week, and the deletion was unfunded, so it's not a...
Correct.
Deletion, and we're saving some money from that, but it's deletion of a fund that, something we had not funded yet.
Correct.
Right, thank you.
Do you have a person in mind for this, or someone to apply for it, or is it internal?
We do not have a, do not have a person in mind, but like all other positions, we post them both internally and advertise them externally.
Yes.
And we will consider the best qualified candidate for the position if we're given the ability.
And what is your timeline? What's the timeline on this?
Well, we're not going to be able to move forward until the position would be formally created by town meeting, which would not happen until the spring, so this would be an anticipation of FY15. So if all went as well as we would hope, we would like to get it advertised very early in the summer so that we could, late spring, early summer, so we could make the appointment shortly after the beginning of the budget year.
Okay, thank you.
So we create it and town meeting funds it, right?
Correct.
A couple of questions, Julian. This, the position we're deleting is the position we established last year, if I'm not mistaken.
This position actually predates my arrival.
Okay.
This has been around a while. The one that was proposed last year was a full-time position in Marine and Environmental Services, which the board declined to approve, so we did not go forward with that.
Okay. So this was, at one point in time, basically a conservation GIS type of person. Now that would be a shared duties?
Correct.
Okay. The reason I'm asking these questions, former Selectman Braga called me this evening, asked about the funding of the position versus last year, and I told him that I would approach the question. How does this, I know we made some savings in the Division of Marine and Environment last year when we merged the two together. Does, how does this, does this eat up all of those savings that we...
Well, I would say that it approximates the savings that we had, but keep in mind, the position proposed for last year was 100% in Marine and Environmental Services, not shared whatsoever, and had a different job description as a result.
Okay.
And we got a clear message from the Board of Selectmen that he did not want to proceed with that position. In the meantime, we've recognized that there's been an expanding need for additional technical assistance in conservation. And in respect to that, and the fact that the need remains for some assistance in the environmental technician area in Marine and Environmental Services, we thought a hybrid position, a blended position, would be the most appropriate course to follow. And even though the other position was not funded, we're proposing removing it from the organization chart.
Okay.
And last year's position remains dead and not being proposed at all.
All right. Now, this is the only time that the Board of Selectmen gets involved in the day-to-day operations, basically the town, because we're establishing a position. But in my corporate experience, I've always found that it's very hard to answer to two lords. How are we going to have this employee answer to the two lords, meaning Mr. Fraser as well as the Conservation Department?
Certainly. But we have in attendance our department heads from those two departments, Greg and Jen, and I would invite them, if it's the pleasure of the board, to perhaps make a few comments in that regard. I will just say going in that this proposal, I agree with you 100% that it presents challenges for management and administration when you have this kind of a separation. However, as you can see from the job description, which was carefully developed by Personnel Director Denise Coleman, working closely with Jen and with Greg, and it's also a union position, so we have discussed that with the appropriate union representatives in advance. We feel very confident because of the affinity between those two departments, the working relationship, and the similarity in skills, skill set and field work that needs to be done, and a close working relationship that this is a, one of those exceptions to a general rule. But again, Greg and Jen are here, and I'm sure they would welcome the chance to comment on specifics.
Well, I'd like them to comment, but then I need to just ask one more question to you while we have you. The chain of command, I know that we have been, under the Board of Selectmen's direction, we've tried to eliminate a lot of your direct chain of command. And where will the next chain of command come? Is that, do they, both Greg and Jennifer, report to you, or do they report to the Assistant Town Manager? That's what, trying to find out where the chart is.
Well, when I, when I arrived, of course, Marine and Environmental Services, as you know, Selectman Murphy was not in existence, and that's one, that recent merger has been created, eliminating one step in the chain of command. But as far as Conservation and MES, both of them report directly to the Town Manager, and that has remained unchanged. We are, we are exploring other consolidation possibilities, not all of them involving department heads, but this would not involve a change.
Okay. I'd love to hear from the folks who do it. That's all right through...
See how they handle who goes first.
Pardon me?
We see who, how they handle who goes first.
That, I know.
She made me go first.
It's part of the deal, you're exactly right. She jumped up real quick then, I like that.
I followed.
We've talked a little bit, Jen and I, about how this would work, and it'd be very similar to the old GIS Conservation Commission position, where when they, we'll have dedicated hours that they'll be assigned to each department. And the only difference here is that that old position, they had very different duties, where this person's going to have very, very similar duties, as you can see by the job description. It's almost a merged one position and could, you know, theoretically fall under one department. It's just that both of us do very similar activities, so we want control over the individual when they're out in the field doing the particular things that we talked about last year, which is land management stewardship. We've been pushing for that for a long time. Try to get some of that responsibility that we've, that the 300 Committee has picked up on behalf of the town, under town control, because they've been very gracious and done that for us for a long time, and we really have needed somebody to fill that role. And as far as, Jen can talk about her, her position, but, you know, we have said that we will have set hours so that half the week is going to be working on one side, half the week on the other side.
As far as working with Conservation, it's going to be the same type of job that the GIS Conservation Tech did. They'll be doing compliance and enforcement. And as far as answering to two bosses, Greg and I speak multiple times during the week, and we have a good working relationship, so I don't think it would be an issue.
Can you follow? What is the, tell me what the GIS Tech actually did you for?
From, in the GIS office, you would have to ask Bob Shay.
No, but I mean, what do you, what do you...
From Conservation?
Yeah.
Compliance and enforcement.
Oh, okay. The reason I'm asking that, the term sounds more like a desk job, and I thought that we were really looking for...
No, it's a field position.
Field position, a boots job.
No, it's, it's a field position and a management position with the, in regards to land stewardship.
Right. And the only reason I'm saying that is because you look under physical requirements, and that was, I see what the job description says, but physical requirements basically says lift objects weighing up to 40 pounds. This is someone I thought was going to be clearing things and things of that nature. That's why I'm asking those questions.
Well, if you look at it, it says mows, rakes, seats, prunes and trim shrubs.
I see that, but if you look in the second page, Pat...
Yeah, I did, I saw that.
It says under physical requirements, that's...
That's sort of standard.
Okay, that's why I'm asking the question.
Yeah, that's a pretty standard.
Okay.
It's all part of land stewardship and maintaining and working with volunteers with the town on land and trails.
Yeah.
I, that's what I thought, but then when I looked at physical requirements, that was the only thing that I threw in.
Kevin, I know that that wasn't even in originally, and Denise insisted that that go in because she really wanted something in there, just for that reason, that it is a very physical position.
Okay.
Certainly on our side, that's 100%, they're going to be, you know, out in the field as much as possible because that's where we need them. Very little office work, Jen obviously has a little bit more because it's record-keeping compliance, but on our side, it'll all be in the field.
The only thing I'm worried about, when you say lift up the 40 pounds, you lift up the tongue of the trailer, it's going to be more than 40 pounds, that's why.
Well, and it's also very important to recognize that this person isn't going to be required to do all of this maintenance. We're going to, this is a management position on our side, too, to arrange with the Parks Department, to arrange the people that they need to bring into the situation to help them.
Okay, okay.
Part of the position is, part of the position is supervising seasonal employees.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? How do we want to proceed?
I move approval to create the position of Conservation Environmental Technician, proposed grade GO8.
Second? Motion to second to approve the new position. Any further discussion from the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Your names.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is a vote to refer the FY15 budget to the Finance Committee. We've had a week to stew on this, and we have to submit it to the Finance Committee for their consideration by the 15th of the month, per the charter. Ms. Gifford, you wanted to say a few words.
Thank you. As I said, I just wanted to make a statement as you begin your deliberations, since I didn't feel there was enough opportunity to do that. So preparing the FY budget obviously has been a particularly challenging task due to several factors, including events that occurred during FY14. In FY14, we incurred unanticipated expenses that depleted monies that had been designated to fund out-of-district tuition costs for our special learners. These revenues included a budgeted amount of $1.8 million, approximately 854,000 in circuit breaker carryover funds, and an estimated $1.4 million circuit breaker revenue stream based on FY13's tuition costs. Combined, these three sources were not sufficient to cover expenses of what we now have of approximately $4.5 million in out-of-district costs. In addition, beginning in FY15, as you know, contractual obligations and the amount of approximately $970,000 will go into effect. Without the department receiving necessary funds, it will become imperative to reduce spending, it has become imperative and will continue to do so, to reduce spending in other areas such as professional development, classroom supplies, instructional improvements, technology, and the like, to cover these mandated expenses, which we've already been doing, obviously, to pull from our operation budget to cover these costs, as I indicated. We have taken appropriate steps to address the FY14 issues and support a financially sound and educationally strong FY15 budget. These include creating efficiencies in our management and operations. We have been building programs that will result in more students remaining within our system, and implementing a budget freeze this year, preventing expenditures, as I said, on classroom supplies, traveling, professional development, et cetera. These are just some of the steps that we've taken to ensure we meet current obligations and are able to enter the 214/15 school year with the funds necessary to sustain and enhance our educational programs. To that end, we've been strategic in our thinking, striving to minimize impact on student learning. And I want to commend our leadership team for its collaborative efforts to develop a budget that reflects a strong commitment to maintaining a quality education system that Falmouth is used to, especially during tenuous times. Maintaining the quality of such an outstanding educational system requires obviously balancing necessary spending that contributes to the success of this system, our contractual obligations, operating and maintenance costs, and mandates that are required by the state and federal government but not monetarily supported. The leadership team has engaged in many discussions to tackle these challenges that have been presented, and obviously, we've considered many issues during this process. I would also like to add that obviously this work is intense for any department, and I think more so for a school department that has so many moving targets and mandates that come at us at exponential rate, it seems. But a school district does not produce widgets. We are a people business, plain and simple. We are not an assembly line that chugs along, never deviating from the routine, and never finding it necessary to modify the process, because the ingredients that go into making a product remain the same. Our families bring us their children, all shapes and sizes, all having had different experiences, some hungry, some reading, some having never opened a book, some frightened, some confident, some with medical issues, some with money, some in poverty. And they trust that we will do what it takes for each of them, so they become all that they can be. We are the heart of a society that asks us to feed, transport, nurture, nurse, diagnose, remediate, counsel, prepare, and protect, all the while ensuring our product leaves our care college and career ready. I don't know of any other organization that is entrusted with so much and is so often required to find ways to do a job that expands every day with less and less. I would just like to add that we are prepared to meet the, whatever the suggested recommendation of the town is. We have prepared our budget. It's been painful, and at this present time, never mind the impact on our students, all of our population of students, but at this time, we're looking at approximately 44 positions being eliminated from our department. And once again, that speaks to our psychological services, our assistance in our classrooms that provide the support that is necessary for our special learners especially. Some of our specials, which you know, we have wonderful music, art, and all kinds of, I was at the high school the other night, and I have to say, watching the most fabulous concert I've ever, my husband said, "This is the best high school performance I've ever seen." I have to say, it brought tears to my eyes, because I had just left a grueling four-hour budget meeting with principals and the entire leadership team battling over who goes and who stays. And to look at a, to look at a program like that and to just think about those steps we take forward every time and progress, and then a few steps back. So I appreciate the position that the town is in. I understand the work that you've all done to continue to make Falmouth fiscally sound. But I just had to, again, appeal to whatever help we might be able to have to make this budget not so detrimental to our over 3,500 students that we service every day. In addition, the 63 or so that we service in out-of-district placement. So that's all. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
You ran through a bunch of numbers, and I was trying to follow it.
Mm-hmm.
It sounded like there's been a few million dollars lost. Was it revenue streams that dried up? Were these like grants that we were receiving from the government, from the federal or the state government, that were, that had been, had reached their end? Or was this, was the shortfall created, and I know it's been said before, by special needs students coming into the district that created a sudden increase in?
Right. It's a mixture, a combination of things. And you mentioned grants. That's, we actually just had a budget subcommittee meeting today, and we passed out materials that showed how, that didn't even include the grants, what I just discussed with you, what I just rattled off. Our grants actually would even be supplemental to that. For example, I'm trying to find my paperwork right here. Oh, here we go. We've seen a continuing decrease in the grant funding as well, which-
So, but of the-
What I mentioned in here did not include grants.
The millions, so where is it that we lost out on those millions?
Okay.
Was it an increase in enrollment? What happened?
When we entered FY14, with a, as I said, we had a $1.8 million budgeted line item for special needs out-of-district costs. We also had an 854,000 approximately in circuit breaker carryover funds from FY13 that would be applied to that as well. In addition, we expected an, about a $1.4 million circuit breaker revenue stream for this year. So we've received all of those funds.
Okay.
So it's a budget, a carryover circuit breaker, and an FY14 circuit breaker. But because of, as we started spending that money on our out-of-district costs, we noticed that some of the expenditures were not being covered, because the money had not been encumbered previously.
Help me understand that, because you just lost me with some of that language.
Yeah, okay. What was budgeted for FY14 was not going to be enough for what was already, some of our students that were in the pipeline, they just weren't projected. I can't tell you why I wasn't here. So with that, as well as, we had also children move into the district with some needs that weren't anticipated, and we also had a number of children through different scenarios that required changes in placement, which, for example, a day placement might be a $40,000 placement, and a residential might be over $215,000. So we saw some of those things happen. So again, those are things you can't plan for. So that, just that piece right there resulted in approximately, I'll just call them unexpected again, unbudgeted, if you will, approximately $670,000 for FY14. So to make those ends meet, obviously, we've froze the budget, we've done some, made some changes. My Director of People Personnel is here, Nancy has been working extremely hard on ensuring that proper protocols and we go to the wall, if you will, on trying to maintain or keep our students here, and that kind, and develop new programs to, looking ahead, looking ahead. But because of the issues that we had, we obviously froze budget spending, and so that's a detriment to the other areas where it should have been incurred, with professional development, as I said, with classroom supplies. For example, I know this might not mean a whole lot to you, but we have this giant literacy initiative in the district, aligned with what's been asked of us from the Department of Ed, the Common Core. And there are specific titles and readings and literature that our teachers have been training to use, and we can't purchase them. So those are just some of the things, you know, we've been trying to change. So going into FY15, why it also makes it so difficult is, as we're balancing FY14, our best, well, one hope is that we just, it comes up to zero, we have, we're balanced. But with that said, that does not give us, as all school districts want to have, a carryover fund, a circuit breaker carryover fund. Traditionally, this district has had around $400,000 or $500,000 in circuit breaker. Last year was extra specially, had 850. We're looking at having zero. So if we move into FY15 with a zero circuit breaker carryover, already with our projected increases in special needs cost of approximately, we're looking at approximately $4.9 million next year for out-of-district costs. And that would include, once again, changes in placement that we're seeing happening, children that are in, I call them in the pipeline, that are on the radar, if you will. And also, we always plan a two to two and a half percent increase just in cost themselves. They traditionally go up out-of-district all of the time that much. The other thing that we like to do, and of course, if there is money left, or like a carryover, whatever, we'd like to prepay those out-of-district tuitions, because you get a reduced rate. So anyway, the, what I'm trying to say is that we're working on FY14. To come out of that hole, the worst, one of our worst-case scenarios, I guess, is that we come out of a hole, but we have nothing left in reserve or circuit breaker to carry forward, making FY15 as difficult as, that's what I said. So-
I've got a couple of follow-
It's very complicated.
It sounds it, yeah. And I'm trying to understand some of this.
I know.
You mentioned the potential of 44 positions being cut. How many of those are administrative positions? Are we cutting assistant principals, or are we cutting teachers?
I can't say who.
Okay.
I'll tell you, it's a mixture. Because at this point, no person has, you know, we're still in that kind of planning stages, but it's a percentage from all areas of personnel.
Okay.
Administration, teaching staff, assistants, et cetera.
I mean, obviously, that's-
And we're going to have more detail, you know, between now, tomorrow night, we work at the school committee. Our 28th is our public hearing. Between now and then, I will be working with the principals to, obviously, we have to notify people that there's a potential that their position is gone for many reasons. So we will be doing that between the 14th and the 28th, and then more details would come out on exactly what those positions are.
Okay. Obviously, that's going to be a decision that you folks make, and I understand where you're coming from.
Yep.
Just to share with you some of the concerns that have come my way, oftentimes, when budget cuts are, and staffing cuts are talked about with respect to schools, one of the first questions that people ask me and say, "Well, why are we cutting teachers? Why aren't we cutting administrative positions?" And again, obviously, those are decisions you folks will make, but certainly, I want to make sure you're aware of the concerns. And obviously, you know, when you talk about creating a product, the teachers are far more important to that process than the administrators are, or at least, that's the way the layman looks at it, so.
Right. And that's unfortunate, because they, and I hear, I understand what you're saying, and all I can say is that the, the number of mandates and initiatives that have come down, the curriculum requirements, the professional development requirements, the educator evaluation tool in itself has created, has put so much more on the plate of just the administrator, never mind, and then that trickles down to the teacher. But an administrator, it's no, you know, they're evaluating approximately 30 people, maybe more each. And those evaluation systems, just that, which is a, which is a core tool that we're using to ensure that our system is of quality, is not just a one-time, let me just see what you kind of did and write up a report. There are multiple visits into classrooms, both in unannounced and announced visits of certain durations, lengths of time. There are multiple reports that are written. Just that in itself is a giant burden. So the increases in what have been asked. Also, you know, we see clearly, having implemented department heads in our high school, and well, actually, from our Lawrence School on up, and we've just been talking about it, the results that we've seen, the changes in our MCAS stupendous achievement rates, every one of our targeted, our demographic groups in our Lawrence School, for example, met targets or more. And we owe a lot of that into not only the structure of our school system, but also the leadership that's been given by those department heads, being able to coordinate curriculum, coordinate professional development, run student assessments, facilitate meetings with teachers as they diagnose what's going on with the, so I hear what you're saying, and I'm sorry that that's the misrepresentation, or the misperception that people have. I mean, surely, our ultimate goal is to maintain small class sizes with intensive instruction going on and support, but also, you know, and the Falmouth District has, from my understanding, decreased the number of administrators. Where I have seven schools with 3,005,58 students, curriculum issues and one curriculum person. So that's the one administrator that's running the entire school system for the curriculum and professional development. So those are some of the things I think we need to share with people, so they have a full understanding of the job of every one of our people in our system.
And that helps, thank you.
Yeah.
I have one question. I know there's some other members of the board that want to jump up and ask questions as well.
Sure.
In the past, there's been discussions that I don't know if they really went all that far, but the schools in the town have a lot of duplication of effort, it seems. The school has a library system, the town has a library system. Schools have janitors, staff that maintain the buildings. We have the same thing on the town side. There's IT for the school, IT for the town. There's personnel for the school, personnel for the town. Is there any opportunity there for consolidating these and allowing the schools to just focus on the business of educating the students and having these other supporting departments just be managed and paid for by the town?
I think there's opportunity, and I definitely would appreciate the conversation. And on that, I guess that's as far as I could say-
Okay.
-right now, but sure.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Jones.
Very radical idea. If the mandates from the states are so demanding, is it really worth it to do them and say, "State, we don't need your money, because you're asking us to do 10 times more than your funding."
It's a lot of money to turn down.
It's a lot of, it's a lot of things that they're telling you, you have to do-
That's right.
And they're not funding it.
That's right.
They're not even coming close to funding the percentage. It's a lot of money, but if it's, if they're only funding 10% of all the things they're mandating, maybe, it's a radical idea, maybe you consider, hey, we have a great system here, a great educational system, we know what we're doing, and we're going to do our Common Core and assessments based on what we know and can say.
Oh, but there's, there's a lot more than, you know, that, the data submission, all of those things. But I often said, it was time to occupy Malden. Just go and have an Occupy sit-in in Malden, where they, the Department of Ed sits.
At some point, some school department says, "No, we're going to run our schools, because we believe that we, our educators know what we're doing," is what's going to get the state to finally either support their mandates and say, "You have to do these things, and we're going to fully fund it."
Right, right. Because they don't.
They don't. And you're stuck in a position where-
Mr. Murphy?
If you'll do me a favor, before we start this conversation, one of the things that irks me is when we use emotion, because there is nothing more than I want to be able to give every department in this town everything they want.
Absolutely.
But when we start the conversation, we talk about, "We're going to have to do away with a song program at the high school." Emotion should be off the table right now, because that's, that's not fair. It's really not fair, because if I could give you all the money in the world-
You would.
And I was the wizard, I would do that. So let's keep the emotion out of that. But I, so getting back to some questions, we're talking about special education. You rattled off a bunch of numbers, and that's not the way I do business, is you rattle numbers off, and I can't follow them. But one of the numbers that I was able to follow is that you get about $3 million for special ed between circuit breakers, the budget, and things. Again, you have the benefit of having it in front of you. I was trying to jot down-
Four. Four.
Four million is kind of what you get, okay. Doug's a math-
Yeah, it was about four this year.
Okay. What is the cost for that? In other words, you rattle the numbers off-
Yep.
But what is the cost? That's what you have in a budget. What is the cost for that? And as you acknowledge, sometimes it goes up, sometimes it goes down.
That's right.
If we put it in your budget, and it goes down, it gets eaten up by other things. See, you have the benefit, and when I say you, the school department has the benefit when you have extra money to be able to save the money or move that money to another budget. We don't have that ability within the town side to do that. So, you know, there are procedures for emergency expenditures currently. So in other words, we need to find out where your baseline is, at least on the special ed. And again, another emotional issue. No one wants, I mean, you know, they use that term out there, "A child left behind." I don't want to see a child not get the services. So we're going to talk legitimate, let's talk legitimate. And I need to see those kind of numbers. You continue to talk about new programs. I like new programs, but we've got to get rid of some of the old programs. I mean, you can't go to a new program unless you decided, "Well, the program we had, we're going to get rid of." I mean-
No, that's not what we're saying. We're saying we want to add additional programs that might meet the needs of a certain demographic of students, that if, in our estimation, perhaps had been, we had had it, for example, at the high school, perhaps over the years, some of these particular profiles of students would not have ended up with out-of-district placements. So we're looking at long-term plans to try to curtail that bleeding, if you will, and cut back on that particular piece of spending. So we are very proud of the programs that we already have to serve different learners, but we want to add to them to pull kids back in.
Okay. So I understand the special ed issue, but, you know, the part about you have $965,000 in contractual increases. You know, when the budget, when the contract was settled, the most educated people in this town should be the educators. And it just doesn't, the math doesn't work. We have this silly little thing in this state that's called Proposition Two and a Half.
Right.
You can't settle a contract for two, two and a quarter percent, besides steps, lanes, moving, increases, besides, that's just cost of living. The math can never work. So you can't come back afterwards and say, "Well, we have, you know, we can't meet the budget." Well, you should have figured that out.
Well, I, as you know, I was not here.
I know that.
I did not play a part in that, so, but I'm going to try my best to continue to move forward in a financially and fiscally sound manner.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
And we're here to work with you, but keep in mind, we only have so much of the pot of gold there, too.
I understand.
So the only way that we could do that is- So the only way that we could do that is go back to the voters.
Mm-hmm, I understand.
And it would be you, and I don't know quite candidly whether that appetite's there for Proposition Two and a Half override, specifically after we just finished doing an eighty-five million dollar school. Those things are there, they're relative, and they're, they're realistic. So, but I'm more than happy to find ways, you know, whether it be, I've heard out there the talk about the opportunity and the possibility of doing some kind of stabilization fund for just special ed. But we have to have a baseline of where, where the funding is right now. And that stabilization, in other words, you know, when the year it goes down underneath that, the baseline doesn't drop. I mean, in other words, if you have a baseline budget of three million dollars between everything for special ed, and then the next year, you don't need three million, well, now your baseline doesn't become the two-point-five, and you go back to the stabilization fund, because it's easy to gobble up that five hundred thousand dollars in the school system. And as you talk about, it would be great, you don't want to give up that money, but I mean, we got into school choice because it looked like found money. You have eighty students coming to Falmouth in school choice, you only have half of that going out. Well, you have the benefit of the, of the four hundred thousand dollars coming in, and then the cost of the town, and the general fund, and other two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that doesn't come out of the school.
Well, that's not like people are writing a check, that's all figured in the formula when the cherry street sheet comes down, and we get that part within that whole Chapter Seventy money. So, yeah, we, and we're lucky enough that that's an addition, as if you figure that whole spreadsheet out.
What is it?
Because we have more kids coming, because we're a great school system.
I know, but we're paying to educate them.
Of course.
So that's my question, is you're talking about lower class size, you're talking about laying off folks, we're educating an additional forty kids from another system. Well, I don't want to spend my tax dollars to do that. I don't think anyone out there wants to. So maybe we need to reevaluate that.
Forty choice, forty choice students?
No, what I'm saying, you have eighty choice students, and we're only sending out so many, so we have a net increase.
Right.
So we need to make a value judgment in this community. Do we want to spend our extra money to, to participate in school choice? Because it's costing the town money.
I would beg to differ, because when you have forty students spread throughout an entire system, you didn't have to hire new teachers for forty students. Those students are taking places that are, are, what's the word I'm looking for, available in classrooms, for example. Do you know what I mean? It wouldn't be like we brought forty kids and said, "Now we need a whole new class and a whole new teacher."
I realize that, but we continue to talk about class size and support and things of that nature.
Right.
That additional forty students, you know, it, it, it's still taking up a teacher's time, and that might be an aide's time, and we might not need to hire an aide, because the teacher might have been able to handle that classroom. I'll follow the same rule of thought that Brent says. People grab me day in and day out, say that there is much too much administration there in the schools.
And I will challenge that.
I, I know you will. And I, I don't, that's your job.
Right.
But I'm just telling you what the perception is there in the public, and, you know, I just, I'm going to leave it at that.
Thank you for that.
So, I, I, I think we want to work as hard as we can.
I want to clarify one thing, because I'm, I'm thinking you might misunderstand, but I'm not sure, just from what I'm hearing. When we do get the circuit breaker money, so for example, you said there was about four, you know, four million.
I was doing your quick math that you gave us, okay.
Right, right, about four million. That figure also changes, because that money is based on the students that go out. So if you depleted that, that cost, you wouldn't still, you wouldn't get that as much money. So you have to hit a threshold, first of all, is an outplacement, I think it's forty thousand dollars, that you, you own the beginning. So if, if a placement is a hundred thousand, let's just say, that we own the first piece, then the state reimburses you on, and right now, it's a seventy-five percent reimbursement on the difference. So if that, those changes in placement happen, once again, I'm just trying to clarify, it's not always that even number of money we get, that changes us all. Okay? The funding.
Yeah. Ms. Murphy?
I have probably a lot of places to start. And I think the first place that I may start is the fact that I heard forty-four, forty-four staff members.
Approximately.
Would not be, would not be coming back to work, would be laid off. When I talk about the Falmouth school system, and I've done it for years, it is probably one of the finest, and it has increased and improved, because we have had adequate staff. And the other is that Falmouth has always reached every goal the state has given us. And a mistake that is made in the state is the fact that they mandate and don't pay. It's not a new issue. It's been going on for years, and as it continues, it gets worse, because the price goes up. There is nothing simple on the school side. There is nothing simple. It all works as a puzzle, and when one piece is out, the others fall. To say that possibly administrators need, we need fewer administrators, the point of administrator is to make sure that the programs that are mandated to keep the students at a high level, as in Falmouth, that I would put up against any other school system, is that it's paid for. So in talking, as I would listen to Superintendent Gifford say, when you start with something that you do not expect within your budget, and it gets up into the millions of dollars, it is not a simple solution. And the only thing that I thought about in talking about our budget was when we, the school system received a two-point-two-five increase, I'm, I'm speaking to Mr. Suso.
Yes, correct.
It got a two-point-two-five. There was a two-point-two-five increase that came from the town. Is that correct?
Which year?
Right, for right now.
Two-point-two-five percent this year.
It's a gross of two-point-two-five, and when we net out the health costs, it becomes approximately a one-point-eight increase on our, our budget from this year. So we're really...
What do you mean by the health cost?
Well, it's been recommended in, in the report, and out, that the two-point-two-five is deduct, is reduced by what would be the increase in health care costs. So, it results in approximately a one-point-eight percent increase over this year's budget, our revenue. So we're going to gain a seven-hundred-and-eighty-thousand, one-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. That was in Mr. Suso's report. So that really is about a one-point-eight percent increase in actual revenues.
Okay.
Okay?
Well, I think my, I think my comments concerning whatever it is that is happening with the school system budget is the point that no teacher should lose their jobs, or administrators. They, the personnel should remain in order to keep the Falmouth school systems as they are, and I'm not really sure what we can think about on the selectmen's side that would give some assistance to the schools.
Okay.
And it really is a shock to me to hear that number in the town of Falmouth, and it will destroy what has been built and what is expected, and it is not simple, and the school budget is not simple, and it is many pieces in the puzzle. And it isn't like any other budget in any other department, and it does, it does have the highest percentage of money coming.
It does.
But if you think about, the person who is educating the children in this school must have two degrees, it's not just a bachelor's anymore, you have to have a bachelor's and a master's to be certified to teach in a classroom in Falmouth. That's serious money that people have to have. So when you go to the level of the professionals, and you think of what it costs to keep that project going within the schools, I think that the Board of Selectmen needs to seriously think about what the problems are on the school side and see what we can do. I'm not finished, I just quit talking.
Where do you propose the body come from?
I think we saw it in the budget the other night, and I think there is also nothing wrong with thinking about an override of that two and a half. That's been the bane of our existence since nineteen-seventy.
Did you have anything, or no? I just want, everybody else is throwing their two cents in.
I just, I just wasn't prepared for this discussion, I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry, I threw a wrench into your...
Yeah, because I know less about the schools than, than probably than I should, but I, I, I really don't know what I could say. I mean, I think everybody else, you know, you've all said it, and Becky certainly knows the school budget better than any of us, probably, but I think, I do think we should all try to work together. I do, I do believe in that. So I think somehow, we should listen to what the school's concerns are, and, and I don't know how we help them get to where they need to be, but I think it should be a joint effort at some point.
Yep, absolutely shocking.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I just wanted to remind the board, it's the second week of January.
Uh-huh.
There's a long road ahead. We still don't know the final numbers from the state for FY-15, and historically, we understand, those are yet to unfold. The health insurance, five percent projected increase, is merely that, a projection, we've reported that to the board, maybe thirty days or so, maybe sixty, just estimated, before we get a final number. So, there is, as we know historically, you have not even transmitted this budget to the Finance Committee yet. So, much, much time lies ahead, even though I recognize that there's a feeling of urgency at times. We have shown, in this community, even prior to my arrival, but I like, certainly since my arrival as well, of a, an ability to work with our colleagues in the school department. I don't see that changing in any manner. I know a year ago, we had some projected shortages, and we were able to work those through. For FY-15, it appears that those numbers are larger, but again, I want to remind the board and others that you have not even transmitted this budget to the Finance Committee yet. We don't have the state's final numbers, and I know by experience, our revenues on the state side are going to change considerably over the coming few months, particularly on the school department side. That happens historically, and we'll, we'll know more about health insurance in the future, and I think that, given that, and our commitment to engaging our colleagues on the school side, I'm highly confident that we will be able to move forward amicably on this. So, I just wanted to remind the board of that, that much lies ahead, including discussions with the, our trusted advisors on the Finance Committee, who are very adept in this process, and we look forward to being engaged with them. And, Mr. Chairman, to tou, to touch on the item you brought up, we did have some early discussions. Obviously, Dr. Gifford is, this is her first year as superintendent, and so we've not had the ability to work together terribly long, but we did have some early discussions, and I'm sure that will continue, about potentials for merger or commonality of effort in some areas. Some of those things can be done more easily, some are more difficult, there are union obstacles at times to some of these things happening, but we are committed to continuing to explore that, and, you know, Bonnie and I have had very cordial contacts about that to date, and continue to discuss it. So I guess I wanted to send out a message that we have considerable time lying ahead, and more information to come in, and I am very optimistic that we'll see that gap shrinking considerably, and wisely, and in an informed way, so that the numbers that seem very scary potentially tonight won't be so scary going forward. So, thank you for hearing me out on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy.
Any more questions? Okay. Thank you for your time, thank you.
You're welcome. Aren't you glad that you waited instead of getting cut off at two minutes?
[inaudible]
Anyone else? Any other feedback from the public regarding the annual budget? Mr. Donald?
Malcolm Donald, 124 Amble Side Drive. Last week, Selectmen, Chairman, Pundin, you asked for suggestions from the public, any ideas on how we could save some money, and I agree right off the bat, I have yet to give it any more thought than that, but, and I hope that people out in the public, other people in the public will come forward with their suggestions on how we can save money. Suggestion number one, combine the fire and police dispatching. I mean, we've been talking about that for a long time, it's been off and on, I don't know where it is, but we could save some money there, could save considerable money there. Secondly, we need to weigh our trap, our scrap iron coming out of the waste, waste treat, waste, the dump. There's a scale right around the corner, Cape Cod Aggregates, they will charge the town sixteen dollars per truckload to weigh the scrap iron. Eight dollars in, eight dollars out, so you tear the truck, and then you, you do another weight gross, and you subtract the two, and you figure out, you know how much scrap iron is, is going out. So if we know how much scrap iron we, is going out, then we can bill the right amount. I mean, that's kind of a no-brainer. And then, third thing, we should not, we should sell our corrugated cardboard and not give it away, which we're doing right now. And while we're at it, if, just want to throw this in, if somebody could fix that, the comp, the smasher, the...
Compactor.
Compactor on that, I mean, the thing hasn't worked for a year. I mean, you have to stand there and hold the damn button, and you have to go through two cycles to make it work. It's just like, you know, let's get it fixed, and if, if Carvosa, who has the contract, if they can't fix it, let's get somebody in there and, and who can.
Okay.
And, so those are my three suggestions. Hopefully, I'll come up with some more. I would seriously hope that this board can look into these things and find out, you know, what can be done, how much money we can save, and I would, I would hope the board would encourage the citizens of Falmouth to come forward and offer their suggestions on how, how they see, you know, the town can save money. And, thanks.
Thank you for the feedback. I think you might be interested in knowing, Mr. Donald, that I think, was it, it was last year, and I forget the date, but we did submit, and have we received that grant? It was a grant that we submitted for looking at consolidating the police and fire dispatch, so the town manager's office is actually actively looking into that, so...
Yeah, that's correct, Mr. Chairman, and in fact, it was several months ago, as you're quite correct, we've been fortunate to receive one grant with the able assistance of Representative Biera, and as the board has authorized several months ago, we've applied for additional grant funding, irrespective of the grant funding that, as we've made clear to the board in the past, that consolidation continues and is underway. It is a complex process, given the multiple unions involved, but important to the town, and we are pursuing it as part of your overall charge to consolidate and be more cost-effective in the way that we deliver services.
Thank you.
I just want to comment on the compactor. I agree that there's, it doesn't always work, and part of the reason is, when I go there, I usually have to take the boxes out and flatten them and put them back in again to make it work, because a lot of people just throw their boxes in, and they don't bother to flatten them, and then that really causes a huge backup in the compactor. But it would be good to have it repaired, but we should also encourage people to not put them in, you know, solid, but to really break them down.
Good suggestion.
Anyone else?
I would move that we send the budget to the Finance Committee.
Okay, so, motion and a second to approve the budget and submit it to the Finance Committee. Any discussion on the motion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The opposition? It's unanimous. All right. The next item on the agenda...
Did you get my email?
Yes, I did, and I was going to... Thank you for reminding me. The committee handbook, the, we don't have an updated draft yet available, so we'll get that on the next agenda. And that brings us to the 2014 Annual License Renewal, and we only have a couple on this evening's agenda. One, actually, this is for automatic amusement devices at Ryan Family Amusements, 23 Townhall Square.
So moved.
So...
So, we have a motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposition? It's unanimous. And that brings us to the individual selectmen's reports. Anyone have anything they'd like to share?
Pat, I left early. Do you want to talk about this morning's meeting?
Well, not quite yet, because we haven't had our meeting with Heather yet. So, I don't want to publicly say anything until, because Heather is the lead on the, on the light bulbs. The compact, you know, and the, I know you don't, but you're going to find out Friday or two.
Kevin?
Okay. Last Wednesday, the EDIC had an open public meeting, specifically invited the committees that could potentially be stakeholders in anything that may happen at the CAP landfill. And we, the engineering company Weston and Sampson that the EDIC had put out an RFP for and hired, took public comments from those, those affected committees, from everything to the bikeways committee, to the recreation committee, to the energy committee, trying to think of all of the agricultural commission. And the record is continuing to stay open for additional public comments, so that we can look at any and all possible uses of the facility. Selectman Flynn attended, town manager Suso was there. It was well-attended. I've received numerous phone calls since after an article in The Enterprise with suggestions. And I encourage anybody who has any suggestion to jot a note, the EDIC has a website, to jot a note to the EDIC, and we'll continue to evaluate and move those suggestions forward to the consultants. It's a long process. I do know that Mike Colazo, Chairman of the EDIC, is looking for a spot on the agenda to bring the board up to speed in the near future and following through with the memorandum of understanding the EDIC has. So, I just wanted to bring the board up to date that it's going to continue to be a public process, and we'll continue to have some public comment as we move forward.
Anyone else?
I went to the Cape Cod Water Quality Commission. I'm on that committee from, as a representative from the town of Falmouth. And there are 16 representatives, and each one gives a report on their town, and there are concerns that some people have concerning the budget with this group. And I don't have a resolution to say to you, but it is being investigated or checked.
The Water Protection Collaborative.
Collaborative.
Yeah.
Commission, I say.
Collaborative.
Okay. Anyone else? Just so the board knows, I've already shared this with Mr. Suso and Mr. Jones, that I did meet over the weekend with the Director of the Falmouth Farmers Market to review the policy, the special events policy. And it looks like things are moving along. They're considering alternative locations, and they'll be working with the town manager's office to satisfy the, the application requirements, and hopefully, we'll have something before us in a few weeks, so. With that, Mr. Suso, anything you wish to highlight in your report?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I'll just touch for a moment, in concurrence with Selectman Murphy, I was pleased to attend the EDIC meeting noted, and pleased to see the progress on the memorandum of understanding, and the fine work of that committee continues. We look forward to that unfolding in the weeks to come. Also, did submit a written report, of course, to the board. Only other comment would be that we look forward to the joint meeting with the planning board coming up on Saturday, and that agenda will be posted following your concurrence, Mr. Chairman, with the items on the agenda. And that concludes my report.
And that meeting will also include some CPC members, is that correct?
Yes. My understanding is, they have been contacted, and the five members have indicated that they would be available.
So, it's enough that's a posted meeting for all three boards?
That's our recommendation for the other two boards to post as well. And that, the intention would be subject to Chairman Putnam's concurrence, that that might be the first item on the agenda for Saturday, is that joint issuing common with Spring Bars, and we'll look forward to that.
And if anyone has any additional suggestions for agenda items for this meeting, please forward it to the office.
There was one, and Mrs. Flynn and I both spoke with Pat Kerfoot, and Mrs. Flynn's going to reach out to her tomorrow to find out what the actual agenda item that they would like to put on.
One thing I noticed having to do with the issue on Saturday is, I know that our Representative Keating is right now filing to get a review of the FEMA maps, objecting that the FEMA maps are not, were not accurately done, and we used a specific ocean model to determine the flood zone maps in the east coast. And that he's concerned that that probably was not the correct way, and which may affect part of the discussion on, just look into that before Saturday.
And I thought Congress had actually voted to extend it for four years before they would become official. That's something we should verify, that whether that four-year extension was actually voted on.
The last we heard as of this morning was July 1 is still the operative date.
Really?
So, I think there's a lot of discussion.
Why do I think Congress voted on anything, right?
But I haven't seen anything confirmed. I don't think either Heather or I have seen that, and we continue to monitor it. So, if we see anything different, I'll certainly get it out to the board as soon as, expeditiously.
Thank you. I move to adjourn.
All right. We have a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
And I'm Margaret Gifford. And we're from Sotheby's International Realty in Falmouth. Margaret, I wanted to get away and do some skiing this winter. And I wanted to get away to the Caribbean. But guess what? The real estate market in Falmouth is so hot right now. And the inventory's low, so it's great for sellers. And Margaret's rates are still good, so that's great for buyers. So, guess what? I don't think we should leave Falmouth. We're going to stay right here.